Your worship are working on the sound here.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that, that motion, we were going to deal with the urban forest strategy next, but in respect to our purchase, that's going to, of, of the sleeping giant, which is embedded in this report, that'll come back to council at another time. Do we, do we know when that is from either the, we, the director or the deputy director of corporate services, when it might come back?
Through you, Madam Chair, typically reports of this nature would come forward to the next council meeting for consideration.
Yeah, do see our, oh, I see our ex-lawyer is still here, just so her and perhaps your committee are aware that this, this will come to councils on a, on a separate agenda item for discussion and approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Jones would like to do a mic check with everybody here? Is that right?
That would be helpful, Madam Chair. I, we have my mic and your mic if I could have next going on our left.
Mine works. Testing.
Test.
Test.
Yep, mine works. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Mayor. So on to item two, the urban forest strategy, and that's a piece of work that has been in the hopper for some time, and it's come to its final draft and is before the committee at this time. So I'm wondering if we can ask the director to provide us with an overview of the report?
Sure, Madam Chair, certainly a little bit of an overview of the process to get here. Did, was initiated by council in 2013 with a, a directive to the Parks Recreation at, at Time Commission to undertake this work. And Diamond Head Consulting was, was awarded the work after a request for proposal process. There was quite a, an extensive and thorough public consultation process that took place, some open houses, survey both online and, and hard copy surveys. They were at the Oak Bay Street Market, anywhere where we could suggest that they would be able to chat with folks who had an interest in this topic. And, and then there was significant feedback at each of those sort of milestone events. And so the report that's come forward now has incorporated all of the most recent feedback, and some of that came from commission and council at, I believe it was an October presentation that Diamond Head did for, for you. And so the, the report now is suggested by the consultant as their final report. And staff have checked to ensure that, maybe not quite all, but most of the feedback that was suggested has been incorporated into the document. And, and we feel this will be a good starting point for the work that will need to take place over the next 15 years to, to see the objectives met to enhance and protect the urban forest in Oak Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. I, I just want to apologize that I've had a bit of a cough lately, so I've taken all the cough drops and medicine I can, but I, I probably will continue to cough, so I'll make sure the mic is off when that happens. And my arm is over me, so you're okay, in good shape. Okay, so are there, thank you very much, Mr. Herman, for that overview. And are there any questions from the committee?
Thank you. Thanks for shepherding this process through. It's been a long, seems like a long time, but maybe 18 months? Two, two years? More than that? Oh, God. Okay, so, but anyways, thanks for shepherding this, this project through to fruition, well, to the end of the, the report and, and hopefully the implementation phase will, will be seamless. I, I, the initial, like the, my initial impression is that there's, there's the biggest, the largest amount of work that we can do as a community is, begins with the education component at first because we have, we have done our bit truly on municipal property as best we can to protect and, and enhance what we have. But is, is that your, the next steps as far as, or, you know, I saw that there's a strategy to be built, but I'd, I'd like to know just where do we go from here?
I think the next step really through the chair is, as part of council's strategic priorities, there is a notation there that an implementation plan, a phased implementation plan will be developed by staff for, and in staff's opinion, you know, that should be brought back as part of the next budget cycle because there's likely to be, there are likely to be some, some asks associated with some of the recommendations. I think the recommendations are, you know, part, some of the recommendations speak to protection of the current forest. So things as detailed as, as different pruning, scheduling and practices that we'll be looking at. Certainly, an education component related to private property, trees on private property, but also investigating options for having private property owners add to, to the tree inventory on their properties, whether it's through enhanced programs or, or what have you. Some places have, you know, either provided free or low-cost trees, but again, there's a budget implication to that, that we need to analyze and bring forward a plan to, to really start to hit the ground here and, and see some impact.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby. Mr. Warren, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Just, just something to Mr., what Ms. Herman said, there, this is something that is on the council priorities list. And what the, what council has talked about was looking at opportunities to do things that we'll, we'll call no-cost items. So there may be things that we can do with respect to our bylaws that move the urban forest strategy forward. But if there are what we'll call hard-cost items, and there are a number of those, staff, there are those, those types of things, that would come forward in 2018. And I, I know that some people think this has taken a long time, but I can assure you that 18 months or 24 months to implement something like this is, that's very, I'll call it ordinary.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Jones. And I guess from what you're saying there is, is that there are no budget implications for this budget year?
That's correct for this year.
Thank you. Are there any further, Councilor Zelka?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Fascinating report, a wonderful read. I, hopefully everyone's had a chance to read through it. It's, I found it very educational. I noticed on, sort of amongst the many, many wonderful details buried deep in the report, having a, a suggestion around the measured canopy coverage with respect to removal of trees, in particular on the private property. I'm just going to use this as one example, and then ask for maybe some idea of how you think we might be doing this. I'm not quite sure yet. But it suggested that, that when a certain trees are removed from a private property, that as a condition of granting of a permit, a certain percentage of tree canopy coverage would be put back on. Now, this is being such a large report, we can go into, I can't exactly pull up the page at this moment, but it's suggesting that for a RS three-to-five zoned property, the target replanting would be in 35% canopy recoverage. For a multi-use residential building, it'd be a 20% canopy recoverage. And for a commercial mixed-use building, it's a 30% canopy recoverage of, of the property, for, for those properties where trees had to be removed. I, I think that's very interesting how this, the suggesting that this be placed in as part of, part of the sort of whole permitting process and part of the, the granting process. Do you see these as being realistic with, with some of what you know happening in Oak Bay today?
I'll be, you know, some of those through the chair, those recommendations are, will require work from a multitude of departments, not just ours. So I'll be speaking just from my own perspective. But certainly, the consultant met with representatives of a number of departments extremely, very early on in the process. And, and staff from different departments have had the opportunity to review and provide feedback. Are the targets realistic? You know, I think we'll only know that over time. But you have to set targets somewhere, and I think it's likely, if we want to, for this strategy to have any impact, the, those targets need to be ambitious as opposed to the other extreme.
If I may, Chair, to follow up. I, I thank you for the comments. I guess the, the, the extent to which we meet those, I guess would be the extent of where, of the people around the table here will come forward and support the bylaw changes, I imagine, that are going to be proposed. I noticed also in the report that there's a suggestion here that, looking at fees, I'm glad to see that it, there's been another analysis of fees. And unfortunately, currently the permit fees, I, I just learned, are currently insufficient to cover the cost of administration of the permits, and in particular for the, the tree protection on public and private lands. So I'm glad to see that that's also being analyzed and maybe at least brought back to a, to a level of cost recovery. So hopefully maybe sooner instead of later, on that, that one at least. And I noticed also later on, one of the recommendation number one, plant 1,400 new trees on public land, and then work with residents and institutions to plant 5,000 new trees on private property. That's, I, I think that's wonderful. I think that the, the aspirational, that seems to be opposite numbers from what we're actually seeing in terms of some of the various reports that are coming through, unfortunately, month after month, in terms of the, the actual tree report. Tends to, to show that on private lands, we're losing more than on public lands. How are you imagining we'll be addressing that one, please?
Through the chair, well, those targets are based on a 15-year period. So I think the way we're going to at least attempt to achieve those targets is to look at these recommendations one by one and start to implement the ones that we can and, and bring forward requests for resources when that's necessary, or in, in order to do the work that's suggested. And, you know, hopefully over time, we'll start to see those numbers turn around. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, one of the things that's mentioned here that's been successful elsewhere are enhancement programs for private property owners, so that if, if we do some education, the community is on board, they want to see those numbers improve. If we're able to provide free young trees or, or low-cost young trees for people to, to access and plant on their property, hopefully that makes it easier. So there, you know, there's 31 recommendations here. We'll have to go through them, prioritize them in order of what we can accomplish and when, within the, sort of the years one to five, six to 10, 11 and beyond. And, and the hope is if we do, we look after the, the small details, the bigger picture will take care of itself to some extent.
Last piece, may, Chair. I noticed that in the staff report, maybe because of the amount of work we have to do in the next year, that it's recommending that any implement, any financial aspects of this plan probably won't be addressed until the 2018 budget cycle. But I'm, I'm certainly hoping if there's non-financial actions that can be done sooner, that, that hopefully your staff has a chance to, to, to jump on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zelka. Is there any other questions from the committee? Councilor Murdock?
Thank you. And through you, Chair, I have a, I'm not entirely clear on what the recommendation here is, is to endorse the report, but there's a lot of aspects of this report, and we may or may not get to all of them, and we may or may not know what the priorities are on them, and there's costs attached. So I guess, I'm not sure if the question has been directed to Director of Parks and Recreation, or Ms. Carter, but what is the, what is the impact of endorsing here, and how granular do we have to be in terms of what we are going to support or not support?
I'll pass this one over to Mr. Jones. Thanks.
Thank you. So the, the intent here is to endorse the plan, which would say we like the direction this is going. And what we have communicated to council in the past is that we would come forward with ideas or things that we can accomplish that are not cost items necessarily. So, I mean, there will be some staff time in preparing changes to bylaws that council may want to consider. Some of the cost items, though, are, include costs for staff, and we are proposing that, that not take place this year, and that we bring those forward for council's consideration in 2018. But we would look at bringing items forward to council in 2017 that we're able to do that would be no, I would say, cost to, to the corporation.
Okay, thank you. And so the one part I had the hardest time with was the, was the bylaw changes recommendation as, as part of this, largely because it's written in that wonderful way of change sessions A, B, C to seven A and move things around. I'm not entirely clear, maybe someone could explain to me where they kick in, particularly the, the aspects of this. The only part of this I really have concern with is the, the requirement of people on the private land to meet a 35% or 40%, 35% on, on residential land coverage if there's a development permit or some sort of permit issued. So I'm not clear on what that is. Is that a new house build, or is that any development permit, like a building permit? Could I have some explanation of that?
Through the chair, I would expect that that would become clearer through multi-departmental discussions and, and analysis to be brought forward for council's consideration. Me, myself, sitting here right now, I wouldn't be able to answer that for you in any better detail than that.
Through the chair, those items, those types of changes to the bylaws would have to come through council. So what we would see happening is we have a, a, a new urban forest strategy. We would look at that and see what are the types of things that we might be able to implement, say, no cost to the corporation. We, we would bring those that we're able to do forward to council, and you would make decisions about whether or not you want to move forward with those. And, but the, I'll say the hard-cost items would not come forward until 2018.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I will say, just on the record, that I have, I have concerns about if that's too liberal, if people have established gardens and they want to make a small change to their house and they're forced to come in and have people come in and determine where new trees go into their property. I mean, everybody's different. Some people have Japanese gardens, some people have rock gardens, some people have this and that. We want to encourage, but we don't want to make trees the enemy. And it feels very much the way it's worded in here, that that might be the case, if we're sort of saying that all changes on property come with that requirement of 35% lock coverage. And I, I just think we have to make sure that we're doing this with carrots and not with sticks, because I think it'll backfire. And I guess the only other comment I would make on this that I'm, I, I'm hesitant on is just that the sheer numbers attached to this report in terms of the recommendations. You know, going through it really quickly, the first two years is around $300,000 in direct costs that they specify. That excludes quite a few things that they say have to be done in terms of consultants and so forth. It is a long list of, of, in addition to the additional staff and the two, two new full-time positions, there's consultants to measure canopy, consultants to develop planting guidelines, consultants to develop green infrastructure recommendations, consultants to create specialized inventory, consultants to develop invasive species and pest management plans and so forth. You know, I'm, I'm, we're doing this budgeting thing right now where we have a lot of really critical parts of our infrastructure that are important. And I think we're going to have to make some decisions about where are we going to spend money on this. Again, I look at it as a very positive thing. I mean, I don't think it would maybe be recognized enough in the report. It was. But just how good we have it here in terms of urban forest, we have a phenomenally good urban forest in this, in this community. And that's been driven largely by the residents here who have planted and loved their trees, and we want to keep encouraging that. But I think we have to make sure that we're, we're spending money appropriate for maintaining that and, and making improvements to it and not trying to, not trying to reinvent the wheel here. So those are my concerns. I just want to sort of flag them. I guess I don't have an issue with the endorsement, so long as, you know, I'm a little leery because the wording of the bylaws as it sits right now, to my mind, streaks a little bit of an uncomfortable streak with me at this point. But I'll, I'll leave that for further discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Murdock. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are all really good points. And I think that is why, to be blunt, staff are not moving forward immediately with some of the recommendations in the report. We want to sit back and think about what are the highest priorities. We think there are a number of things that we can accomplish to support the plan that are not necessarily cost items, but we recognize that there are significant issues and significant costs. And we want to make sure that we bring those forward in a way that council can carefully consider them in conjunction with other priorities.
Thank you very much, Mr. So nothing's cast in stone. There's work to be done in, in future here. So thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I, I see this, this motion as really just us accepting the report and the, the principles set out in the report. Obviously, the details will be difficult to grapple with because they have large numbers attached. Just take one example. I mean, it, we may say the 15-year horizon is too narrow. We might want to do 25 years. So we might want to do 10 years if there's all of a sudden grants. But those are, those are decisions that we're not making tonight. I think we're making, we're accepting that this is the direction that our, our community should move in terms of protecting its community forest. And I think these are laudable goals, and I think it's, Councilor Zelka has pointed out, these are, there's some huge, huge numbers here that will be a challenge to, to achieve. But I think we should set the goals high and do our best in order to achieve them. So I, I, I see this as just a, this is a, a big step for us because it's been some time in, in the making. But the, the next step really is then the, more of the heavy lifting in terms of the details. And I, I also agree with Mr. Jones. When we start making those decisions, we'll have to balance all the other priorities in our community. So, and that little by little. So the room wasn't built in a day, and we're not going to rebuild our forest in a day or a year or five years even. So this is a longer-term project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Kirby?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I, I just wanted to suggest a couple of things that, that Councilor Murdock raised, the asset management plan, and how we're looking at our infrastructure as a, as a, you know, big project now of, of establishing what there, where the infrastructure debt is and where, where we go from here. And some communities, including Gibson's, use a different model where they included their urban forest as one of their assets. And so they included it as, they have an asset management plan that sees the forest, the urban forest, as an asset of the community that needs to be invested in and maintained, just like every other part of the infrastructure. And so I think, you know, that's an interesting way of approaching it, as if it does require such a massive investment of $300,000 in the first couple of years, that's, that's, that's very telling, and that's very similar to the rest of our assets that are, that are needing attention right now. So I do, I do hope, I mean, I look forward to the implementation of the report. And I think we have, we've taken, you know, great strides by having this, this report created and, and taken, you know, great strides by having this, this report created. And, and, and I know that staff worked very hard. And actually, that was my initial comment. I forgot to compliment the parks staff because I know Mr. Chris Heidlay invested heavily in this report. And, and I think that's, that speaks volumes. It's a, it's a valuable report. It's not going to be shelved. It's going to be actioned, which is really reassuring that we know that there's, there's a lot of energy behind it and passion for the trees in this community. So, and which is why we've, we've done so well on public property is because of that passion from our staff and leadership. And in conjunction with the community. And so maybe there's ways, I mean, I think, I'm sure they've already thought of this, but the Friends of Uplands Park, you know, is already working hundreds of hours on, on the implementation of, of the maintenance of, and invasive species removal in the park. And those volunteers, we've captured their passion and energy and saved the municipality thousands of dollars in, in removal fees and, and really truly actually rescued that park from being overgrown. So I, I hope that whatever comes next, that we, we ensure that those, that collaboration and the, the education of the rest of the community is part of this. And I think that Uplands Park Group has done an amazing job of educating and showing leadership and, you know, with the support of, of staff have done, you know, made great strides. So we can do more, even more, I'm sure. I mean, the boundless energy of Margaret Ledkey is, is, there is no, there are no bounds. So we, I'm sure we can do wonderful things. So I, I look forward to the implementation and I, I would move the endorsement of the report.
Oh, moved by Counselor Kirby, seconded by Counselor Zelka. Is there any further discussion? I'll call, yes, Counselor Murdock?
I'll just, if I could make an amendment to that motion to, to endorse it in principle and to direct staff to bring back a suggested implementation plan to a future committee of the whole for consideration.
What was that, an amendment to the motion? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, the motion was just to endorse it. My motion would, my, my amendment motion is to endorse it in principle and to direct staff to bring back a suggested implementation plan to a future committee of the whole.
Okay. Is there a second or two to that amendment? Counselor Kirby?
Point, point of order, I just, I would just ask of Mr. Jones if that isn't the intent of the initial motion already? Like that, that, isn't that what we've asked staff to do by, by endorsing the report? Sorry, the council endorsed the urban forest management strategy as provided by Diamond Head Consulting. I, my understanding is that means that, that it will be endorsed and, or that will be, an implementation, sorry, strategy will be brought to council and that it does mean in principle.
Thank you. Through the chair. So one of the priorities approved by council is to work on an implementation strategy for the, the plan. Any changes to our bylaws or policies will have to be approved by, by council. So those, those types of things just won't happen without the approval of council. So you can change it how you wish, but, you know, from a, a practical perspective, we cannot as staff make any changes or a corporation any changes to bylaws or policies without council approval to do so.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Yeah, okay, Counsel, just, okay, now, Mr. Mayor, should I, Mr. Murdock, is your point to this point or to the, to the amendment?
Yeah, just, so the amendment's been seconded?
No, it has not been seconded.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll second it to get it on the floor. And what I was going to say was I, I really don't think it changes anything that we've been discussing. I think it just clarifies that what our expectations are, and that is to see an implementation report that was going to come forward and endorse. And principle is no different than endorse, in my view. So just more words, but a little more clarity. Thank you.
Sir Murdock, I'm going to ask Mr. Jones because I think it's in response to what Mr. Mayor just said.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just to be clear. So staff were intending to come forward when we're able to with ideas for implementation on what I'll say are the no-cost items. And that might be in advance of a broader strategy that looks at some of the cost items. So what we were anticipating doing as staff was looking at the entire plan and saying, what are those things that we can bring forward to council over the next year that would be a no-cost item to the corporation? And we, we recognize that there is a broader strategy, but we would like to consider moving forward with some of those, I'll call them, earlier items. And that in 2018, we would, sorry, for the 2018 budget, we would bring forward some of those either items. So I, I don't want to necessarily say we want, we want to come forward with an entire plan that says, here's how we're going to implement everything. What we would like to do as staff, or, or sorry, suggesting as staff, is that we look at the plan and say, here are the things that we think we could implement that are not going to be a cost item to the corporation. And we will then look at those other items that might be cost items. So I don't want to commit to an overall plan that would look at everything and say, here's how we're going to implement everything. Because there are some, I'll, I'll say, kind of perhaps some quick wins that we could move forward with that we don't necessarily think have to wait till the, the larger plan is implemented.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Counselor Murdock, then, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Through your chair, to my mind, this is just for clarification. If the report didn't have very explicit changes to the bylaw, for example, in there, making very, very, very clear modifications to wording and changing and so forth that are in this report, I would feel comfortable with the endorse. The reason I want the endorse in principle is that I've tried to read through that and understand the implications of it. I don't feel comfortable they have. I'm not sure if anybody, if everybody else here has and does feel comfortable, that's something else. But I, to my mind, and this is not just for us, but it's for future councils that are going to be dealing with this, if they go back and look at this, if they say it was endorsed, then it's clear that basically everything in this report would be endorsed, including, I, I would read it that way if I was looking at it. Endorsing it in principle is just, it makes it a little more clear that the, the goals are intended, but the, the details are still to come. And I, I appreciate this as wording. I, I can't support endorse, just for me. So it's a, you won't get a unanimous yes on this if it's, if it's endorsed. If it's endorsed in principle and have, have the implementation plan come back to us, that would be, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Murdock. Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to say, I think the, what Mr. Jones is suggesting fits within the, within the current motion.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think it says bring one plan, bring a plan together, plan Part A, low fruit.
Right.
No cost. Plan B, cost. I think, we can do that.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. If the word strategy wasn't there, then I, I might agree with Counselor Murdock. But because we're endorsing a, or the, the original wording was to endorse a strategy and not an implementation plan, I'm fine to leave the wording the way it is. And I know that an implementation plan will be brought forward to a future committee of the whole. I know that budgeting numbers are not going to be applied until a much later budget cycle that will have to come before council. So I see, I don't see any reason to do this amendment, so I'll be voting against.
Okay, so, yeah.
Let me just make a point of clarification. The name of the report is the Urban Forest Management Strategy. It's capitalized. So by endorsing this, you're not endorsing a strategy. My reading of this, but you're endorsing the, the, the report named Urban Forest Management Strategy, which includes all those details. That's my reading of it. That's, that's, that's my comfort level with this.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is let's vote on the amendment before we go to the public, okay? So if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question on the amendment.
Could, could you just tell us what the amended motion is one more time?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to, or Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion would be to amend the motion to read that the Urban Forest Management Strategy as provided by Diamond Head Consulting dated March 24, 2017 be endorsed in principle and that staff be directed to bring back an implementation plan to a future committee of the whole.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Against? Counselor Zelka is against. Okay? Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor? You were, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, Counselor Kirby. That's okay. So, okay. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go to the public and ask if there's anybody who'd like to come to the mic to speak to the report from the public. And that, I'm going to take that as a no. Okay, so, yep, that's, we've got a motion on the table. So if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Against? All, all in favor? So I think, motion approved. Thank you.
Just before we leave that topic, I just want to say a few things. And it's kind of came up to what others have spoken about. This has been, this has been ongoing for a few years. It started with the last council. And in fact, Mr. Holding may have been on the commission last time when this was discussed. So it's, it's been with us for a while. And it's, we've gotten to what I think is a very important point tonight of moving forward. So there's been a lot of work done. And the commission, it should be commended. And certainly, I speak on behalf of council, no doubt, and our community, thanks for that work, which is important work for our future and our future generations. And staff have also, and I think it was mentioned by Counselor Kirby, have really thrown themselves into, to this and really did, have done a superb job. And even members of council, and I know our chair tonight was quite an advocate of, of having this urban forest strategy move forward. And I think he was the liaison at the time to, to the commission. So it really has taken a community of interest to come together to bring us to this point. And it's a very exciting point. And I think it will pay dividends to our children and our grandchildren and, and children from there on. And so thank you very much to the commission, to, to Mr. Herman and his staff, and certainly the counselors that were advocates of this from the outset. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Zelka?
A point of, of clarification, if I may. Because we only have six people at the table, six council, six voting members, I just want to confirm that on the amendment, with respect to your vote, were you in favor or opposed to the amendment?
Yeah, I would have put my hand.
Just wanted to confirm. I wasn't sure. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All in favor. Thank you very much for making that clear, Counselor Zelka. Okay, so with that, thank you very much, gentlemen, for sharing your thoughts and being here for this discussion. Thank you very much. So now we have, move into our land use applications. And we have a total of six applications under the land use section. And just so the public is aware, before coming to the committee of the whole, all these applications have been through all of our advisory boards for review and comment. So with that, we begin with four sighting and design applications. And at this point, if the committee determines that they're ready to proceed, then the recommendations will be included for adoption in the minutes of the council meeting for April 24. Okay? So item number three is an architectural sighting and design application at 3155 Sherrington Place. And this is for a new single-family home at Sherrington Place. And it was referred to the March Committee of the Whole for more information from the applicant. So I'm going to, yes, do come forward and write your names and addresses at the, with the piece of paper there that's there. And while you're doing that, I'm going to ask our planning department staff to provide us with an overview of the application. Ms. Jones?
Yes, this is an application for Uplands sighting and design. So the proposal is for a two-story, single-family home at 3155 Sherringham Place. The application has been through the advisory design panel on three separate occasions, working on a few details with, with respect to the design of the home. Our parks department, our arborist, has also been involved with the application since its inception, looking at retaining as many trees as possible on the site. The initial proposal was now to remove one tree. The committee of the whole at their March meeting asked that that be referred back to the applicant to see if they could work on retaining that last tree. They have since come back with a proposal to retain that last tree through a suspended foundation at one corner of the garage. And I'm sure the applicant can speak more to that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Are there any questions from the committee first? Yes, Mr. Jen, Mr. Mayor?
Let me start by saying I really appreciate the work that's been done in the meantime. I really think that really shows a real spirit of collaboration. I know I brought the issue up and, and what you've done, I think is really, it's great. And I just wanted to clarify from staff, you've had a look at this and it, certainly from my eyes, it seems to meet the objections which we discussed. Is that the feeling of staff, too, I get from reading the report?
That's right. The planning department has reviewed it and both the, the arborist and the manager of parks has reviewed it and, and agree with, with the results.
So I think that's great work in the meantime, and great listening to and great working with, with our staff. So thanks.
So if there's no further questions from the committee to staff, I'm going to turn to the applicant. And my understanding is that your arborist, Mr. Guy, is it, Mr. Guy?
Jai.
Jai, Jai, okay. Welcome. And I understand you have a three-minute presentation or thereabouts. Okay? Okay, so I'll, I'll let you go ahead. You've got all the clickers and whatnot before you, have you?
I, I do.
Okay.
Is this on now?
Yes, you're, when the red light's on, you're on.
I don't have to hold it. Okay.
Okay.
So, yes, I'm going to briefly run over how we propose to keep this tree. But as part of my presentation, I'd like to, because I didn't have the opportunity to be here when the original recommendation was put forward, I want to go through our rationale for that because we did, did have good reasons for suggesting the removal of the tree. I want to make sure that you're clear on it so that when we move forward, one way or the other, it's with all the facts. So we've engaged, so just as a bit of context, we've, we've been working very hard with Chris Paul, your arborist, myself and, and the applicant, to modify the site planning and design to retain as many trees as possible. So we were down to this last tree. If we're going to retain a tree close to a building, from my point of view, I have to, have to be confident that if we're going to spend the money and time on doing it, we have to have good outcomes. And my reason for hesitating on this particular tree was not just to do with its condition. It's, structurally, it's fine. Health-wise, it's, we've rated it as fair. And that's because it's currently showing a fairly low shoot extension. It doesn't have the level of density of buds in the crown, the canopy that we would look for, for a tree of this age. And there's a fair bit of dead wood, which admittedly, the tree has not been pruned for, for some time. So, but more importantly, the tree is currently going to be placed 2.5 meters from the wall of the building. Typically, when we prepare for an excavation for a building, we have to overexcavate perimeter drains and so forth. So with a conventional construction, it appeared to me that we were going to be impacting a lot of the root system of this tree. Had the tree been located further away, we wouldn't even be having the discussion. But in my opinion, it wasn't reasonable, I wasn't confident of the outcomes with a conventional construction, to recommend the retention of the tree. And I would also point out that we've been successful in retaining all the other trees as well as protecting the trees of the neighbors. And that we actually exceed the, the target canopy, proposed target canopy for this type of land use type, which is, at least on the copy of your urban forest strategy, draft strategy that I have was 45%. So we're sitting at around 48% if we don't include this tree. I think the other reason for considering the removal of the tree is that to, in order to retain it, we're going to have to completely rethink the foundation for the building and invest heavily in consulting fees and special measures. and invest heavily in consulting fees and special measures to construct pier footings and grade beams to support a suspended slab. And that's gonna cost a, a bunch of money, it's gonna cost about $20,000, we think. And I, I just wanted you to consider, you know, um, a concept of sort of incremental cost for a measured amount of benefit. Now, in, in retaining all the rest of the trees, which allow us to meet the canopy target of your future strategy, I don't know what the nominal cost is, but I imagine it's somewhere around about a thousand bucks a tree. This tree is gonna cost, you know, an order of magnitude more. And, um, if we remove this tree, there is an opportunity, uh, to plant new trees. And the thing about urban forest canopy targets is that they have to be sustainable. And right now, the trees that are on this lot are all mature trees of roughly the same age. And they're all gonna come pickling off the conveyor belt around about the same time. So, my interest is in establishing the next cohort, the next generation of trees. And I'm looking for any opportunity I have to plant new Gary Oaks here and everywhere else. So, these are some of the considerations that were in my mind when I recommended the removal of this tree. I think it places an unreasonable burden on this applicant, and we're trying to really, we're trying to win hearts and minds from our residents. Those residents that have mature trees do all the heavy lifting currently. We're not asking enough of residents who don't have trees yet. And we need to lift together. And, so for those reasons, I recommended the removal of the tree. Having said that, we've, we have done what you've asked, we've come up with, uh, a structural engineering plan to retain the tree. We've had it reviewed by your arborists, uh, they're in support of it, I've had their input on it, we've, we've folded that in. So, I think we're good to go. But I would like you to consider one more time, please, on behalf of, of my client, whether in fact, this is one tree too far or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the overview there. Um, so questions?
Sorry for the slides.
Yeah, no, that's good. So, questions from the committee to the applicant, Mr. Mayor?
Keeping in mind what you said in terms of creating a, a sustainable, is there, is there an alternative plan, if you're gonna take one out, to put a series of others that, I mean, I, I see the plan up there. Is that ostensibly the plan that we had before? Or, uh, can you suggest another approach if, if we were to say, okay, well, take that money and invest it wisely in trees on other locations, uh, on the, on the property? Is that a possibility?
I think yet, yes, but I think there's an important principle at stake, which is that the, the idea of, of a healthy and abundant urban forest is a community vision, is as a community asset. But right now, with the bylaw, it rests on particular residents to uphold. And I'd like to see us lift together. So, if we're going to ask a resident to invest in some expensive infrastructure or the equivalent value in new trees, I'd like to see that supported by the entire tax base. I don't know why we would point-load the cost of that public asset on a particular resident, unless they're asking something of the community in the way of, you know, rezoning or subdivision or something. So, we can certainly add new replacement trees, I think we have an appetite for that. Um, I don't know about $20,000 worth, but in principle, I'm with you, yeah.
It, it strikes me, madam chair, that, uh, that that might be an alternative from what I hear you say. And although we don't have a, a, a policy of providing trees at other locations, I, no doubt, our staff, working creatively with you, might be able to work something like that out. Uh, and, uh, so, but, and I appreciate what you say in terms of, you know, of, of one person bearing, uh, the responsibility, but, uh, there, um, I think there, there's joint responsibility, community and individual here, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Murdo, or Councilor Murdock.
Uh, thank you, Chief Chair, to staff. Uh, my question is, just, um, under our current tree protection bylaw, this tree, if removed, would have to be replaced with two trees, is that correct? Because it's outside of the building envelope? Or does the impact from the foundation make it, uh, considered as inside the building footprint?
That to staff or the applicant, staff?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, as part of the initial review of the proposal, uh, the district arborist did indicate that, uh, with, with that tree being removed, uh, we would require two-for-one replacement.
As indicated on the plan, there are two trees there for you.
Okay, and, uh, is just, it's not required by our bylaw, but through you, Chair, to the applicant, was there any, uh, suggestion of, of providing a replacement tree for the one that was inside the building footprint on the property?
Uh, that's not a protected tree, but, uh, certainly, we're open to ideas, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions to the applicant from the committee? Oh, yeah, Councilor Kirby.
So, um, you didn't get to the other parts of your presentation there, but the, with the slides, I was, I was, I was keen to, to ask a question about the, the health of the tree, and your explanation was that there, the crowns aren't producing as many buds as we would expect. And, so, the age of this tree is 100 years old?
Uh, I would say it's a pretty productive site, so I'm gonna say probably less, probably something in order of 50 or 60 years.
And the, um, and there were, the, the trees, the rest of the trees on the property are mature trees and, um, older, yeah, and this is one of the younger ones. So, only, yeah, this is, you came with a, this, the, the report from our manager of planning, um, made me breathe a sigh of relief. We found a nice compromise, we collaborated, now you're tugging at my, uh, um, there's an ethical dilemma here of, you know, that, that, that is a very expensive tree, you know, and I, I, um, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't seem entirely fair, but at the same time, I do, there's this other side of me that's, um, questioning about the, the need for the, the garage to be, to be as large as it is. Maybe if the garage was smaller, then, then the impact might not do, need to be there. So, uh, is there, is there something that you can help me, help me out here?
So, uh, I'd like to address that. So, we're building a, we're proposing to build a family home, we're a family of four. We have two children that have, uh, one, one that has his own car, so we have three vehicles, two motorcycles, and a host of, uh, lawn, uh, lawn equipment, so I have a ride mower and a couple of other mowers. So, the, the need for the garage space is, is justified. Thank you.
Ask you to provide your name and where you live, please? For the record, it's for the record, thank you.
Yes, my, my name is Tugo Rados, and I currently live at 3155 Sherringham Place.
Very much, and you've got it written on the piece of paper there?
I do.
Thank you very much.
I'm also joined by my wife, Nada, who, who's here with us today.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, Councilor Kirby?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, Councilor Murdock.
I just, I'm, I was not at the last committee of the whole meeting, I was out of the country, but, uh, so I'm curious, is there information from staff in terms of the health of this tree? Um, in terms of just, uh, clarifying to my mind, I did the same thing, I read through the report and, and sort of felt, okay, this seems to be a compromise reached, so, uh, I'm okay with that. But is there any information that you could provide me in terms of what the, what our arborist says about the health of this tree, uh, and so forth?
Certainly in discussions with Chris Paul, he anticipates that the tree is in fair condition, uh, with a life expectancy of probably around 30 years.
Okay. Miss, done, Mr. Murdock, that's it?
Well, I guess procedurally, um, we have a recommendation here to approve the plans as provided. What would be the option if you wanted to, did not approve them as provided? Would that just be to revert to the old plans, which we don't have in front of us? Is that the? Oh, the, we just use the plans that were attached to, so the prior ones and reference those? Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions from the committee, I'm gonna, uh, yeah, Councilor Kirby?
I do have one more question. So, is it, is it, uh, I, I heard two different things, that there are two replacement trees? If we were to allow the, the Gary Oak to come down, that there would be a requirement of two replacement trees on the property?
If council were to go with the initial proposal and that one tree is removed, we would require two replacement trees to go on the site. If, uh, we move forward with the amended proposal to retain the tree, there would be no requirement for replacement trees. Having said that, there's nothing to stop the applicant from adding new, smaller trees onto the site.
Councilor Kirby? Um, so, the, the tr, the tree that's being removed, um, the, the fir, that's Douglas fir, that's being removed, has no impact on replacement trees because it's within the building envelope and it's not protected. It's because this Gary Oak will be impacted by the building, um, either way, that they are required to have two replacement trees.
Yes, if a tree is inside the building envelope, there's no requirement for replacement.
Okay, if there, welcome, Councilor Braithwaite. So, if there's no further question from the committee to the applicant, I'm going to, um, invite, uh, the public, if anybody would like to speak. And it appears not, okay? So, uh, let's come back to the committee for some discussion about getting a motion on the table. Is there anything else the applicant would like to say before we move into a discussion as a committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to say that as, um, mentioned before, we were at the design panel, uh, on three separate occasions, and we accepted every one of their, um, changes or recommendations. Uh, this initial, um, recommendation for this council was to, was, was in agreement with Chris Paul. So, when we discussed this tree for the first proposal, it was with his agreement that he said, yes, if you remove this tree, replace it with two new ones, we're good with that. So, so we have followed every recommendation that both the design council had made and the arborist. And then when we came to this panel or this council for the first time, um, there was a, a comment made about the, about the, uh, tree. We have come back with a proposal, if that, if that is required to keep the tree. However, we would like to see the first proposal, uh, considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, we need to get a motion on the table?
I would move that we recommend, uh, as a process here, we recommend to council, I'd recommend to council, approval of the original design with the tree removal and replacement with two trees.
Second. Murdock, and seconded by Councilor Braithwaite, further discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Did I hear you say that you, you would consider putting more than the, the two extra trees on the property?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I take you at your word, and, uh, on that basis, I would support this motion, thank you.
Oh, look, may I, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing, I, I, I did like the, the opening that you provided, Mayor, of, um, the possibility of locating one or more trees elsewhere in the district. But the urban forest would, we're certainly willing to consider providing some more oak trees.
I think we have very receptive, uh, um, arborists in our community that, uh, or work on staff that would help that out. I don't think that's a problem.
So, do we, with that suggestion sort of being aired, do we need to formalize that? I may just ask Ms. Jones that, no? Okay, so that's just on the table, so, we've got a motion on the table, Councilor Zelka?
So, if I understand correctly, um, if we go with the original proposal, the original, um, um, uh, motion, then there would be two trees planted on the property, you know, as a replacement for the one that's been taken down.
Minimally.
Minimally, and then possibly two, as, under maybe, I guess, a gentleman's agreement of some sort, if I could use that expression, uh, at least two others, either on the property or somewhere else. If that's the understanding, I could support this.
Okay. Councilor Kirby?
I just want to say that, I mean, your timing is, is terrible, given. Couldn't have come to a worse committee of the whole, really. This whole urban forest thing right at the top of our minds, but, um, um, I do appreciate that you understand the sentiment. You understand where our struggle comes from, that, you know, the Gary Oak ecosystem is threatened and, uh, that we're doing our very best to maintain it for, not just for us, but for future generations. And, um, given, you know, climate change, all the impacts, these, this is, this is a really difficult decision, especially with all that background. So, um, but I do appreciate your willingness and your understanding, and this maybe is our first educational opportunity, where we, uh, we, we encourage you to, to, to support the urban forest and continue to steward the trees on your property and, um, and recognize the value, not just to your property and the beauty that will surround you, but also to the entire community. And by protecting and stewarding those trees, you're, you're looking after them for generations. And, so, thanks, thanks for doing that and, uh, and for understanding the position that we're in. It's not that we want to penalize anybody specifically and make your, your building plans more challenging or add further costs and, and time to your project. It's just that we have this responsibility to, to do the stewardship as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to confirm for everyone here that, uh, if, if this resolution were to pass, and I know it's a gentleman's agreement, but, uh, from a staff perspective, we would, there would be an expectation that there would be a, a couple of extra trees, and we would talk to the, uh, the applicant about where those might be provided on-site or some other location in the community. But that would be the expectation that we'd be moving forward on.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, Mr. Jones. To the applicant, yeah?
Yes, that, that is understood and agreed upon.
Okay, thank you for coming. So, we're ready to call the question? All in favor? Against? All in favor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, we're on to, uh, item four, 390 Beach Drive, Architectural Siting and Design Application. Uh, so, this is an architectural design, sighting and design application for a new lot, approved through the subdivision at 390 Beach Drive. We'll just wait till people have a chance to leave. I'm gonna ask, um, yes, welcome, and you can just jot your names and addresses there on the piece of paper. And in the meantime, I'm going to ask Ms. Jensen to provide us with a, an overview of the application. Thank you.
Certainly, as you mentioned, this is an application for sighting and design on the property at 390 Beach Drive. This was the result of a two-lot subdivision that was approved in 2016 at the corner of Beach Drive and St. Patrick Street. The, uh, lot that was right at the corner of those two streets has already been, uh, built on. So, this is a new property owner that's looking at 390 Beach. So, they are proposing a two-story, single-family home in a modern style on the site. They have been through the design panel on two separate occasions. Uh, the design panel did recommend approval. Uh, they also recommended a, a number of other modifications to the site, one of those being narrowing the driveway strips to provide more greenery to the site. The applicant has undertaken that. Uh, they also looked at trying to increase the symmetry of the beams at the front of the property. The applicant has increased the depth of those beams, and, uh, we're still awaiting further information on landscaping.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions from the committee to staff? Is that, Mr. Mayor, your light's on there? Are you wanting to talk? No, okay. Okay, yeah, Council, Councilor Zelka.
Yes, thank you, Chair, sorry, I'm, I'm just collecting my thoughts here. Uh, I, I recall, uh, at a previous, um, session, like a previous, uh, meeting, and, uh, staff may have to remind me, when we were discussing the actual subdivision of this property or, or, or the, and, and I, and I, result, I understand as a result of that, uh, that, that process, that removed that wonderful, um, uh, heritage-looking home at the time, I think if I remember correctly, it floated off to, uh, to, uh, to join, uh, some others in the United States. When I saw the actual, um, uh, plans for, for that thing, it, it, it showed, uh, I guess, some typical houses. One of them seemed to be very boxy, and the other one appeared to be very, well, shall we say, Oak Bay Contemporary, with a peaked pitched roof and, um, uh, as, as part of the actual, um, suggestion as to what might be there. I, I guess I was imagining that of the two houses that were gonna replace the one, that they wouldn't both necessarily be square-ish, flat-roofed boxes. And it, and now that I've, that's, I see this, this, the second plan that's come forward, it's, I, I now see that, that has been, was, was resulted. So, I guess an expectation had been put in my mind as a result of the drawings that were there when the, and when the, when the land was first subdivided. were there when the, when the, when the land was first subdivided, that possibly one of the two would at least have a pitched roof. During subdivision process, when there are images of typical houses and, and typical footprints of what might be there, do we have any say other than the fact that, you know, the, I guess the, the landowners agreed that we would have architectural sighting and, and design controls? Was that really the, the aspect that we've been given as a result?
As part of the, as part of the subdivision, sighting and design approval is standard covenant that gets placed on the subdivisions. I believe that this property actually had a previous house design that went through, but then the property was sold and new owner designed a new home. And it's pretty hard to start restricting style of design in the covenant, but it could be done. But I would have to hear that that is a desire of council in the future.
So if I may, Chair, through you, but at least by, by providing, or at least including in the covenant, I guess, on the land, that style and design provisions can be controlled through council effectively, we could do that here at the table. Is that what I'm sort of hearing you say?
That's what it is right now here before you for sighting and design.
Okay, so, Counselor Murdock?
Thank you. I actually had the similar question about process of that. So that was March 21st, 2016, that was approved. It was part of the subdivision process. I mean, I really, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's private property, the house meets within the, the zoning. I don't have any great, I don't have any issues with this really, but I am curious about the process, about why we go through the process of approving a sighting and design as part of a subdivision process if those designs aren't actually attached to the subdivision process as a result. So, can I just get a little clarification on that for some staff? So essentially, it's a guideline, but not a, if there was something that required variances, that would be where it would be more binding? Is that, is that accurate?
Mr. Thompson?
Well, it's similar to Uplands in that if a design of a house, for instance, well, the last issue was a tree issue. I mean, council before have asked a design to be changed to accommodate a tree or a sighting of a house to be changed to accommodate saving a tree. So that is part, that is the reason of the covenant and also being, Oak Bay being a fully developed community and the streetscapes and everything else, that gives council the opportunity for sighting and design considerations in the context of, of the street.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just make my comments now because I think this probably didn't want to drag out too long. I, I'll say just from my opinion, again, I think, I'm not going to vote against this. I believe that the, you have a right to build what you want. I wish there was a door facing the street. I've always preferred that from a welcoming aspect. I always find these, the, the visage without a door always a little bit cold. But I do also appreciate this is a narrower design than the original design, provides more separation between the neighbors and so forth. So, there's pros and cons to everything. I don't really have any questions of the applicant. Thank you.
If there's no further, Counselor Kirby, still with staff. Questions to the staff? Yeah?
I just had a question for Ms. Jensen. You said that the landscaping plan would come at a later date and I just noticed, given the discussion earlier, that there are very few trees on the property and it does look rather stark. So, I'm wondering if, if that will include other trees or if you have any idea what it might contain?
Yes, the, the plans that went forward to the advisory design panel, some of the discussions around that were exactly how do you improve the greenery and particularly around the house itself. So, we did ask for the applicant to provide additional information. To date, we haven't received anything. I do know that the owners are planning on undertaking some additional landscaping and we would expect to see that as part of the building permit application.
Okay. Counselors Elka?
Thank you, I thought it was yours. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Another question for staff. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification on the aspect around having architectural sighting and design applications as part of a subdivision and I do appreciate having an opportunity to, to provide comment. When, when, can I ask a question of the applicant yet?
Further questions to staff from the committee? And if there are not, you're on, Counselors Elka.
Thank you so much. Through, through the chair, I'm not seeing the arch, the landscape plan. Unfortunately, it does come across as a very cold and stark, rather, building. And I'm definitely looking forward to it being warmed up a little bit, shall we say. Now, with the lack of trees on the property, and here's a wonderful opportunity from an architectural sighting perspective, what provisions have you made, architectural design, for things like solar or passive, since you've got a wonderful opportunity at this point without the trees?
Now, thanks, Counselors Elka. To the applicant, before you speak, just say your name and where you're from, for the record, verbally. I know you've got it written down.
I'm Damon Gray with NZ Builders and I live in North Sainich. Do you want to go to? Get out of it.
Sure. Thank you. Could you speak into the mic?
Jacques Boivert, City of Victoria.
Thank you very much.
Just as a point, there was a landscape plan provided. There was a landscape plan provided with, okay, so there is, the comment referred to in the last meeting was with respect to planting by the front door. That was sort of the, the one comment that was made at the last design advisory panel to enhance, I guess, the street perspective. That was, that was really the only, there was a planter, I think, added to the front door, sort of to, to make that distinction, I guess. So, there was an actual plan and there was, we're planting, there's a few Gary Oaks and they're being planted in the backyard and there's, there's quite a bit of general, you know, new vegetation being planted. I mean, it's a bare site right now. There is zero trees on there at, at the moment, so, and they're planting, you know, a full garden in there, so. And, yeah, to talk about the, the house being built, there's a, is a concrete tilt-up house and is going to be built to a very, very close to a passive standard. It is basically built as a passive, we're just not going to go for the certification, yeah.
Sorry, could you, you have, otherwise the people who are watching?
It will be net zero ready. Ready, yeah. Because 2032, the building code will be built to that standard, so we're building houses to that standard today.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you very much. I understand that, maybe you can speak to, to at least your half of the, of this site, that a bit of excavation was done. I, I understand there's, there's no basement. In fact, there probably can't be a basement because of the elevation above, or lack of elevation above sea level. But with respect to artifacts or the whole sort of heritage aspect, with respect to anything that may have been found underground, I was wondering if you could just sort of speak to if anything was found and what was done with the artifacts found possibly? Thank you.
There is a covenant on the property now. We have to build at a certain elevation, higher than our average grade. So, we actually have had some restrictions in height in, in, in respect to that because bringing the slab up mean that you're, we're losing height in the building, so we have to struggle with that. There's only a very small area of that lot that is under an archaeological study. It's very small and we're dealing with this now because we're putting underground hydro cable and tellus and we are actually working under a permit to do this. But we did some excavation today, we didn't find anything, no bones, skulls.
Go ahead.
A final question, if I may. So, I, I don't really see a pathway to this house and, you know, I guess touching on Counselor Murdock's sort of question around no front door, what will the trick and treaters do? What are you expecting them to do when they come to this house, since there doesn't even seem, appear to be a walkway or path? I'm just kind of curious. So what's the expectation, please, for our neighbors?
The driveway being, being separated by, by the greenery will act as, as the path, the main path for, the garage being in the back, the cars will not sit in the, in the driveway per se, right?
The applicant. Counselor Kirby?
Sorry. Cracking me up. Okay, so the, I, I, so I see now, when I look at the, the plans provided here, that, that there is, there are specifications of the, of the types of plants. I, I didn't realize that that was, it's just a different format than, than we're used to seeing, I guess. So, and I do see Quercus garyana at the back, so I'm assuming that's Gary Oak.
I'm assuming that as well.
And so that's, that's encouraging. Thank you for the clarification and there does seem to be a variety of native plants included, so that's exceptional as well. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further questions from the committee to the applicant, I'm going to invite the public if there's anybody who'd like to comment on this application. I don't see anybody moving, so I can bring it back to the committee.
Move the staff recommendation?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Croft, seconded by Counselor Kirby. Any further discussion? I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Against? Thank you. Thank you very much. So, we've got item number five. Item number five, this is an architectural sighting and design application to modify the design of a single-family dwelling at 3355 Midland Road. Is the applicant here? Yeah, you can come up. And while you're signing your names up, I'm going to ask staff to provide us with an overview of the application. Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
This is an application for Upland Siting and Design. It is at 3355 Midland Road. This is a single-family home that's currently under construction. Council previously considered this proposal in January and July of 2014 and then again in April 2015. So the initial proposal was for a two-story home with basement on this site that also included an accessory building and gazebo structure. Since that time, the applicants have determined they no longer wish to build a two-story home. They are proposing to go to one story. It would still include the accessory building, but the other gazebo is being removed as well. This is a site that's on a bit of a slope, so the, the basement portion of the house is actually down below from the street, not easily visible.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions from the committee to staff at this point? Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, through you, Chair. I'm looking at the floor area calculation and I got very confused because it says the lower level is 2,103 square feet, the main level is 7,847 square feet, for a total area of 9,950 square feet, which is a .23 far. But then it says, note, additional 4,025 square feet of lower level area not included in far calculation, area more than one meter below grade, plus the garage of 3,973 square feet, and electrical room of 248 square feet. So, how many square feet in total is, is this house, I guess is my question? Is it the 9,960 plus the 4,025 plus the 3,973 and the 248?
The total square footage on the home is just over 15,600 square feet. What you're seeing are certain portions of the basement that are actually exempted from floor area calculations.
And that includes the accessory building is not included in the floor area ratio? That would be the, the garage, is that correct?
Yeah, the accessory building does count towards floor area, but it's a separate calculation from the single-family home.
Okay, and the site coverage is allowed as 25% and proposed as 24.64%?
That's correct. And I should note that the garage area and the slab for the main floor are already constructed, so the proposal to go down to two-story from one story makes no impact on the existing footprint.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. So if there's no further questions from the Counselor Kirby? Nope? Okay, so I'm going to go to the applicant and this is, I'm going to let you introduce yourself and I understand you have a three-minute presentation to provide us.
Is that on? I guess it is. I'm Larry Checo from K. Checo Architecture. If you want to see the sort of before and after, I have those sort of slides or you want to see the, okay.
As you, as you wish, right? To make the application clear for us.
So this, this was the elevation that was approved back in, oh, it's been a long time in this, this building yet, so probably about three years ago. So that's the approved one at, at, with the upper story. And that is the proposed elevation where we've dropped the floor. It wasn't, the client thought it would be easy just to knock a floor off, but it's not that difficult. It's not that easy to actually take a floor off a building without changing. The whole building was designed to have a two-story. So it was, it was a lot of work to actually bring that down to one, but this is the approved north elevation and this is the elevation proposed. So, I guess the best thing probably do is maybe if I can, how do I show that little film? To, to work the massing, what I've done is create like a horizontal frame that goes around the building, it drops some of the heights down. So that frame is actually like at nine feet and the rest of the inside building is, is 12 feet. So to kind of create the massing, it's, even though it's dropped and created more of a horizontal field, there's this, quite a large band that goes at, at a nine-foot, 10-foot level. The overall ceiling is dropped, I think, four feet, the curved roof. Three years ago, when we went to a design panel, that roof was actually a gable roof, which was not well-received. And on the accessory building down below, that, that roof is, is a green roof. Advisory design panel thought maybe I could have a green roof on some of the sort of, I call it these little sort of saddles. There's a couple of issues there. It's hard to get insurance for a green roof on a residential building and also because of the stone that we're using, we're worried that it's going to stain the, the limestone.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So, are there any questions to the applicant from the committee? Counselors?
Thank you, Chair. Just to confirm, is this already built? I just wanted to know how, how far along are we at this point? I'm not sure to answer a question, if I may.
We have a building permit and we've built the foundation and the suspended slab, so we're at the, we're at the main level right now.
So, following up, so I, I mean, I just want to say I appreciate the fact that, that it's been brought down in height. I, I mean, it still has quite, quite a extensive site coverage, but I guess that's not really much different from the previous, from the previous approved plans.
The site coverage is, hasn't changed at all?
Hasn't changed, but, but I do appreciate the fact that its profile has come down and that's definitely, that has helped a lot. Sort of a similar question from before, what provisions for solar or, or passive are you making in your design, please?
Well, this, this building is actually, it's, it's all steel, so it's actually, if we went to like a lead program, it would get quite a few points because it is all recycled. There's virtually no wood in this building. It's all recycled steel. And then the other passive thing is the walls are, there's insulation on the inside and then we have an outboard insulation panel on the outside, so it's actually quite thermally, but.
Okay, Counselor Murdock? No? That's not, okay?
I was going to make the move that we approve it.
Okay, okay, I'll take a motion, then I'm going to invite the public, okay? So we've got a mover and a secondary Counselors Elka. So before we go with that, I'd just like to invite anybody from the public who might like to speak to the application. And it looks like there is nobody, so let's bring it back. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the table. Counselor Kirby?
My only comment is that, again, this, this is one of the applications that's kind of stuck with me for, since, since three years ago and when it first came to me, because I remember the number struck me, the 17,000 square feet always alarmed me and, and that it sticks within the 25% lot coverage is, is, is like, it's, it's it's, it's, it's obviously a very large property, but, um, it, it replaced a house, and I remember this all these years later. It replaces a house that was seven percent coverage.
Correct, yeah.
And so we lost a substantial amount of green space and, and, um, and, um, the runoff for, you know, the, the ability for the property to absorb, um, the rain and, uh, storm events that are getting increasingly more dramatic as with climate change. I, I, it, it really bothers me, the, the size of it, so I, I, I understand, I, I, you know, appreciate that you're, you're just, you're reducing the, the height, and the footprint will be less so. Um, so I, I obviously will support the motion. I just, um, I would encourage you to, to be inspired by the presentation earlier about the for, urban forest and, and, uh, plant some Gary oaks and, and, and make sure that, because those are the most resilient, um, species we have here. They're native species, and, and to, uh, encourage the, the applicant to, uh, to, to make up for that, that loss of, uh, green space by improving the urban forest in, within the property.
The contractor, I think we, we didn't take any trees down. One down on that whole site, yeah. And the client is actually willing to put more trees onto the site.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Alka. Mr. Mayor, and then Counselor Zelka, thank you.
It's more of a technical question. I, I did a site visit today, and, uh, it's, it's been at that stage for quite some time when you've essentially built the basement. And since that time, since that long time, we've, we've gone and, uh, approved a, uh, an Uplands sewer, uh, project, a very significant. Your lot slopes off from Midland down back to the street behind it. It would be, I would've thought it'd go in the back. Now, have you made provisions? 'Cause one of the things that we've talked about and, and we've agreed to is that we're going to pump, um, in, in some instances where it's required, rainwater into a new line, which presumably in your case will be on the front of the property. Is that all in place?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, so it's just a matter then of, of setting that up once we're on that street and hooking it up?
Correct, yes.
All right. Had you planned to pump even before that, or?
Uh, I think, yeah. Yeah, and we wanted to align the sewer, but the, the, the client was willing to pay for that whole new sewer replacement in the back, because it's actually at an angle across our site. And there's only one house that's actually, I think, one house? Two houses are attached to that one line, but we're willing to pay for, the, the client was ready to straighten that whole line out.
Okay, well, that's something you can work out with engineering if it's possible, I guess.
I think it's, it's, it's done now, I think, yeah.
All right, it's all right. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so if, uh, Counselor Zelka?
Uh, thank you. I had sort of a similar question, uh, that, uh, if I may direct a question to staff, just to clarify. Um, I understood for the sewage, um, um, combined sewage, um, project where we're separating the pipes, that the existing pipe is gonna take storm, and the new pipe is going to, is going to be sewage. Uh, that was my understanding. Could you con- confirm that for me first of all?
I believe the mayor said that the new storm was going in. New storm pipe? That's, that's my understanding. I, I, I mean, it's more an engineering department question, but, uh, my, my understanding is it's a new storm pipe that is gonna be in the Uplands. So it'll likely be going on Midland Road, not in the back.
So, uh, no matter what, we'll, we'll, we'll be asking the applicant to, I presume, pump, uh, some waters uphill to this new pipe.
Yeah, the storm, and they're planning on that already. They've already got that in their plan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Against? All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Checo. So we move on to item six. A, um... This is an Uplands at three-one-five-five Beach Drive. This is an Uplands sighting and design application to modify the design for a single-family home at thirty-one fifty-five Beach Drive. So, is the applicant here? No applicant here. Okay, so, um, can I ask staff to provide us with an op- uh, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just before that, just before we do that, I'm, I'm gonna suggest we defer this. I was out and had a view today of this plant, and this is, so we're at just, make sure I'm at three-one-five-five. There's over fifty different variances between what we approved and what was built, and it's actually quite, uh, significant, uh, when you total them all up. In isolation, maybe not. So I, I, I'm not sure that we can really deal with it unless we hear from the applicant and/or, uh, either developer or the owner, because there's a lot of unanswered questions, I think, as to what happened here and why it happened. And I guess the concern that I would think council might have is, is there, is there some kind of tendency or pattern where we approve Plan A and Plan B gets built? And if there is, what are we going to do about it? Uh, so I think we would need, at, at, from my point of view, uh, we should have some kind of explanation for the, uh, the builder or the owner. And to, to go without that, I don't think we can really make an any informed decision.
Okay, uh, Counselor Zelka?
Um, I, I assume that was one large whereas attached to, uh, the mayor's motion, and assuming that is a motion, I'll second it.
I haven't made, I haven't made a motion, just, but if someone could, no, I'm suggesting it be deferred.
I, I, I move that motion.
Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Uh, is there further discussion?
Um, yeah, I, I have the same concerns as the mayor does with the fifty, um, uh, changes to a plan, and I was wondering, um, perhaps if staff could, uh, perhaps let us know what happens in a case where there's so many changes as far as any fines that are incurred, um, to the applicant, or if there's anything that they have to do as far as getting different, um, uh, building permits, et cetera, because that would be my main concern, is how much time and energy staff spend on something like this, and what it costs the regular taxpayer, like, all of us sitting around this table, when staff is putting in a lot of extra time and energy on something that was not approved to begin with.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Braithwaite, and, uh, go to you, Counselor Zelka. Before I ask, if there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
Um, staff wants to answer the question first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I didn't understand you were looking for. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so the Uplands bylaw actually doesn't carry any fines to it. So unfortunately for citing an architectural design under the Uplands bylaw, and the Special Powers Act of, for Uplands, uh, council would actually have to, uh, take somebody to court to enforce, uh, a specific design.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Counselor, is that a follow-up with that, Mr. Mayor? Okay, go.
Or we can, we can just insist that they build to the plans, correct?
Yes, that is an option.
Thank you.
I don't think that's ever been done before.
Counselor Kirby?
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, so, uh, I'll try to speak to the motion, when I believe the motion is to defer, but with respect to that, there is a, a, also a, a report here that I just at least need some clarification of, so I can, would know what to, 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 to mull over while we, while we're deferring this. Um, on page three, uh, twenty sixteen, it says that the applicant chose not to pursue registration of an environmental covenant as approved by council. I just want to clarify, is that the Geotech report that said this house will flood? And that we were going, insisting that the, uh, owner, uh, under a section two-one-nine covenant, uh, put that on the land title? Is that what that is?
No, that, that covenant with regards to sea level rise and the flood construction level, uh, is registered on title. Uh, that is done.
So if that's the case, then what is this talking about? Plantings?
Sorry, to clarify, this was to do with, uh, placing a covenant on the property for protection of the landscaping in perpetuity.
Counselor Kirby?
Just a question about process. If, if, um, if we were to have a, a different kind of, uh, bylaw, like we have the Special Powers Act from nineteen thirty-five, if we were to have a different bylaw, like a DCC, um... Sorry, Development Permian Area, DPA, um, a, a, I, for the, for the Uplands, which I think is a more modern approach, um, to these large properties, would there be, um, I mean, this is probably too, uh, out there, but I, I just wondering if this, if this would, this kind of thing could take place, no matter what we had in place. I mean, somebody could ignore the process and, and, and do their own, their own, uh, plans, is what it appears to be. I'm just wondering if there, if there's another method, that, another tool, uh, that we might apply to a situation like this, um, to prevent something like this happening in the future. And I just also wanted to ask another question of whether, who, who provided the list? There's, it, it appears to be the applicant has provided the list that says at the top that it in no way represents a comprehensive list of design revisions. I'm wondering if that's from staff, or is that from the applicant?
Uh, just as a little bit of background, this is a single-family home that's nearing completion. So, uh, because of that, um, building inspection and planning had both gone out to do a review of the site, and it was at that point that we determined that, um, revisions had been made to the design that did not meet the approved plans as, as issued by council. So at that point in time, the applicant did make an application to bring it back here to approve those modifications. Because there were a number of, of items that didn't seem to be addressed, uh, staff undertook to, to, um, go through each side of the building and determine what had actually been modified. So that is coming directly from staff. Um, to answer your previous question, um, the Uplands, the Special Powers Act and the Uplands bylaw are very unique to Oak Bay. Uh, generally speaking, in most municipalities, you would not see development permit areas for single-family homes. There really is no legislation that would address that. The only thing that comes close to that is when you're looking at intensive residential development, and that's where you would be looking at higher-density single-family homes that it may apply.
Thank you. I thought that we had, might have another means of, of addressing this than this, what feels sometimes to be a fairly antiquated approach with the, with the Uplands. But thank you. Thanks for the explanation, and I appreciate the, uh, the explanation about the list, too.
Uh, just to play devil's advocate a little bit here, I think, um, I, my understanding of the reason for deferring is to get a chance to interrogate the, the builder and the, and the homeowner, or to inquire with them the, the reasons for it. I interrogate is probably the wrong term. You know, I think that's, that's a valid reason to, to bring it back. I, I don't really have an issue with it. I, but really, I'm also trying to look at this from an expediency perspective. We have this in front of us, the, there's a lot of changes that are largely minor in nature and reverting back to the original design that was approved. The advisory design panel, uh, went through their process of looking at these and, and recommended approving them. So if we're looking at this purely from a, a land use approval perspective, I think we have, you know, uh, probably enough information here. So I, I guess the question here is, do we need more, I guess, the reasons for the motivations for the changes and how they're brought here? Could I, honestly, I, I looked at this, and I appreciate there's a lot of unanswered questions that I would have, and maybe that would be offline with staff, uh, as to the story behind this, but at the end of the day, the plan's in front of me. As I see them, I feel comfortable approving, so... I'm not sure I entirely support the defer motion, although I understand that there's merit in it as well.
Just to, just to respond to that, uh, we don't know what happened here. Was there a problem with communication between the developer and our staff? Uh, was this done inadvertently and innocently, or was it done purposefully? And if so, what were the reasons behind it? Some of the materials, in fact, have been changed, uh, from what was supposed to have been concrete to what was, I, I think, just, uh, plastic with some coating over it, I think. So, uh, you know, th- that is something I think we need to know. Uh, is it our process has broke down, or was it theirs? And in fact, we did have, uh, Counselor Braithwaite may recall, up on Uplands some years ago, we had a somewhat similar, but not exactly similar situation where the roof line was changed and the front design was altered. Uh, and, uh, we essentially said, "No, you gotta go back to that." There was not exactly to what it was, because I think we, uh, we, we tried to reach a compromise, but it may well be here that some of these things can be undone, uh, or should be undone. One of the things that, uh, that I noticed today was there was supposed to be a wrought iron, uh, railing at the back, and they put glass in. Now, the part of the, uh, the, the design committee talked about the, the view from the back is in fact as important as the view from the front. You probably see more of the house from the back. And, and that, uh, that does change the outlook from the back. So if we're, you know, if we're serious about, uh, working through these plans and, and, and looking at them carefully and approving them, there should be some expectation that they're going to be followed, unless there's a, unless there is a good explanation. Uh, and if there is, well, so be it, but, um, we, we still have the option of saying no. Uh, there's certain, of these over fifty, you should come back and, and redo these ten or those twenties. I mean, that might be getting into the, the granularity of it, as it's called, but, uh, we have that option. And without knowing more, I don't think we can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mister Thompson. Did you, were, were you asking to talk? Yes, speak to it?
I was just gonna let you know sort of what, a little bit of the history here in that there was an approved, uh, design originally. It might've been two years ago. Uh, and then during construction, um, there was notice that there was changes, so we required the applicant to actually bring those changes back to us and to design panel and to council. Those changes were approved, and then they built something that is now in front of you. So they, they changed things, and then they changed things, and didn't tell us of the second change.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. That's helpful. So we have a motion on the table, and what I'd like to, even though it is to defer, and we'll see, um, I'd like to see if there's anybody from the public who has come to speak to this application. And it looks like there is not. So if there's no further discussion with the motion, I'd like to call the question. So all in favor? Against? Okay, thank you. Let's move. So the last two items are rezoning applications, and if the committee determines the applications are ready to proceed, each bylaw could come before council for the first two readings on April twenty-fourth. And should the bylaws receive two readings at that time, then a public hearing will still need to be called for the application. So item seven at five-nine-two Island Road is a zoning amendment application running concurrently with a development variance permit application to allow a two-law subdivision at that five-nine-two Island Road. So is the applicant here? Okay, I'll invite you to come up, and as per just, you jot your name and address down. While you're doing that, I'm going to ask the planning department, Ms. Jensen, to provide us with an overview of the application. Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
So this lot at five-nine-two Island Road is located in the southern portion of Oak Bay. It's a larger lot that's currently occupied by a single-family home that was constructed in the nineties. The applicants are proposing to subdivide that property into two pieces, uh, with the existing home sitting on the larger lot. This does require a rezoning with the, uh, the larger lot retaining its RS4 zoning, the new lot proposed for RS5. It would also require a variance, uh, for the, for the smaller lot, for lot width. Uh, the applicants are proposing, uh, to, to construct a smaller home on the, on the southern lot. Um, they have offered up, uh, in exchange for the, the rezoning applications, to, um, plant a number of trees, uh, to the approval of the Parks Department in some of the local parks, and to pave the road surface along Earn Street just past the existing driveway. This application has been in front of the Advisory Planning Commission, who indicated support for the proposal, although they did indicate concern about the loss of trees on that southerly lot. Uh, this concern is also felt by, uh, staff. So in exchange for the rezoning, staff are recommending a number of conditions be placed on the, the proposed lots, uh, to establish the road paving area to look at... the road paving area, to look at tree plantings and landscaping in the area, and to set out a suitable building envelope that would protect the trees that are currently on the site.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, so any questions to staff from the committee?
Uh, just to be perfectly clear, uh, this is an RS4, being split into an RS4 and RS5, the lots, aside from the width, uh, comply, so the, the, the new lots would be compliant, uh, for terms of minimum lot size for RS4, and the smaller lot compliant with RS5, aside from the width, is that correct?
If the rezoning was approved, yes, yes, it would need.
Thank you.
Kirby?
I just, uh, I understand that the, uh, narrower, the, than, than a, uh, standard RS5 lot, and I just, I don't know what that means, I mean, I can see sixteen-point-three-eight and on the back, and twelve-point-two-seven, is that, that would be, uh, meters, I'm assuming? Oh, I didn't catch that, it's in the, uh, it's in the report, the numbers are in the report. Okay, so it's forty feet instead of fifty?
That's correct, so, uh, currently, the minimum lot width for an RS5 zone would be fifteen-point-two-five meters, which is fifty feet, and they are requesting twelve-point-two-seven meters, which is forty feet.
Okay, that's still a very wide lot compared to, is, and then, but the length of the lot is, is a hundred feet or, or something similar? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Braithwaite?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that I think this is a, actually a, a good use of land, um, and, um, so when it comes to be time to move this forward, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Sorry, yeah, okay, so we've got that, uh, in mind, Council Braithwaite, so let's turn to the applicant, if you could introduce yourselves, and we'll ask the committee if they have any applications of you.
I'm Rob.
It's called questions, actually, yeah.
I'm Rob Paris.
And I'm Rob's wife, Anita.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
And we're the owners of five-nine-two.
Okay, thank you, I think the cough syrup is coming to me now, it's wearing in, okay. Um, okay, so, are there any questions from the committee to the applicant? Okay, Council Kirby?
I just, I wanted some more clarification about the trees, the, um, the, my understanding from the staff's, uh, report and explanation is that there's a trade-off being taken place, that there will be loss of trees on the site because where the, the new house will be going, but, um, you're planning on replacing those trees elsewhere, or, yeah, okay?
What we're looking at is, there's one oak tree in the front center of the property, very, uh, close to the Island Road site, and what we'd like to propose is to, um, I was, if the rezoning did go through, I was planning on redeveloping the boulevard, and I've done a lot of work on the existing boulevard in front of Lot A, and we would look to plant some oak trees on the boulevard, and then also look at, um, planting some further oak trees on Anderson Hill Park, and I've also sourced out, um, from a nursery out in Central Sanage, you know, replacement oak trees that are twelve feet high.
Thank you.
Any other, Council Zelka?
Uh, thank you very much, um, interesting redevelopment proposal, and I appreciate, um, the, um, the community amenities, uh, 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 do you understand what's being asked for, or, or are these being offered as community amenities by, by you, and how's, how's the negotiations going with staff? I wanted to just ask about that first, please.
Yes, those were offered by us and, um, agreed to by, um, the planner, Deborah Jensen.
So then a question for staff is, in addition to, um, the trees that are being offered as a community many, amenity, which would be on, I guess, presumed the boulevard or public, other public spaces, how many trees would be, we be asking for them to plant on their property in terms of the, the private space? I understand, it's great we're getting trees on the public space, but we also want to encourage trees on the private space, please.
And that is definitely a conversation that we want to have, as part of developing the conditions of the covenant and, and incorporating parks approval with that. Uh, discussions with the Parks Department to date has been very much looking at, um, smaller native vegetation to go in front of the remaining part of Lot B, uh, as the applicant indicated, the rest of that boulevard has already been undertaken, there's been no discussion about tree, uh, trees being planted within that boulevard area. So, just a little bit of background, um, staff have been, um, quite clear, I would say, with, with the applicant and their, their agent through this process, that the original, um, building envelope, there, we were not supportive of that for the reasons of retaining the trees, so there is the one Gary oak that would directly be affected by the building envelope, but depending on where the, the house fell within that building envelope, it could also impact the trees that are along the side of the property as well. So, staff had indicated that, uh, the preference was to, to, uh, specify where a building envelope could be cited on the lot that would not impact the current vegetation. Uh, as far as the contributions, those were put forward by the applicant, um, in, in exchange to comments that had been made by various, uh, departments within the district, um, improving, uh, the driveway access along Earn Street with the paving, and, and then they've offered up the, the, um, the plantings.
Follow-up, uh, thank you, Chair. So, um, I, I think the community amenities are, are reasonable, uh, including not asking for affordable housing in, in terms of this thing, this is probably not appropriate in this place, but in terms of what's being offered, I think is, is, is quite reasonable. I presume, since there are offers to be putting things on the public boulevard, for example, and also with respect to possibly doing some paving even, it sounds like, uh, I presume staff will be providing the standards and the guidelines, and I presume there'll be some permits as well in terms of the, the boulevard, uh, planting permits or whatever, it would be needed for something like that, I'm just wondering, how will that whole process be, shall we say, managed? What's the expectation on that?
The extent of the paving, the requirements that are around that will be through the engineering department, uh, and again, we will work, uh, with the, with the boulevard and plantings along that, with the Parks Department determining exactly what that will look like.
And the last question I've made, uh, so with respect to then, uh, the sighting, uh, to protect the, as many existing trees as possible, um, would that be part of this, um, uh, process we're going through now, or would this be part of a later process in terms of deciding where the actual footprint's gonna be, and deciding how many trees will be protected? When will that occur?
As it stands right now, we're recommending that that building envelope be set by a covenant to be registered to the property that would be, um, registered prior to adoption of a zoning bylaw. Uh, another option is to hold off, and, and we would still be requiring that through the subdivision process.
I guess I then have a follow-up question related to that, um, so, uh, it sounds like whether it's one way or the other, we still have, uh, leverage to, to provide, um, uh, some, some indication as to where it's gonna be, as opposed to providing the approvals now, and then they can put the house wherever they want later. Just wanted to make sure that, that we still have some level of control, whether we decide now or later as to where the footprint's gonna be.
Council can decide on one option or the other, as it stands right now, because it is through a rezoning application, we're recommending that that building envelope be set as part of the rezoning application. That envelope does allow them some flexibility in terms of where the exact house location will be inside of that building envelope, uh, we would also be looking more closely at the, the specific sighting of that and the design of the home through the infill development permit area at a later date.
And if you'll allow me one more question, because I just realized I had another highlight here, it says in the report that development would require upgrades to infrastructure, uh, and infrastructure, does that refer to sewage, storm, drains, et cetera, et cetera? What does that exactly mean, please?
That's correct, it would be the requirements of the engineering department, should a new law be incorporated.
So Kirby?
I was gonna move the recommendations, um, of council, or, sorry, recommendations of staff.
Second, by Council Kirby, second by Council Braithwaite, so before we go there, I just wanted to ask if there's anybody from the public who wanted to speak to this application, and it appears no, so is there any further discussion on this application, Council Murdock?
Uh, thank you, Chair, to the applicants, I, just, uh, looking at this, obviously the building envelope has that tree in it, but there's room in that lot to move it back and forth, I am curious just wh- why at this point that tree is included in that, as opposed to sort of just moving the, sort of proposed window, uh, of, of build, is that just a house size requirement issue, or size of backlot, or, or yard, or, what, what drove that to include that tree within the building envelope?
I think, uh, several reasons, um, for that, one is that we would, you know, we'd like to, to cite it so it's, um, situated with the sighting of the existing house, and, and then we'd like to have it as close to Island Road, too, because, well, one, our, our neighbors would like that, because it would give them a lot, it would give us more privacy and a lot more light in the backyard, and it wouldn't encroach on their property as much, too. So, our neighbors, um, on all, all three sides, well, three neighbors, you know, I think they would prefer to see it sighted as far close to Island Road as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, then I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Uh, against, none against, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay?
Okay. And then our final application for the evening, um, this is a zoning amendment application to permit a deck expansion at one-six-seven Barkley Terrace, and is the applicant here? If you'd like to join us here and, uh, jot your name and address down, and while you're doing that, I'm gonna ask staff to provide us an overview of the application. Of course, we know who you are, but we're gonna ask you anyways, okay, Ms. Jensen?
So this is an existing, single-family home that was constructed in nineteen ninety-seven, um, renovations were undertaken in two thousand and sixteen, that met all the requirements of the zoning bylaw at the time, uh, as part of that renovation, there were some modifications to the exterior, um, minor, along the front face of the building and the rear, uh, which, which retained a portion of the deck. Um, since that time, the applicants have constructed an additional two-hundred-and-sixty feet to what was approved, um, and this is a result of bylaw enforcement, so, uh, as a result, the applicants have applied for rezoning to not only allow for the, for the existing deck, the two-hundred-and-sixty square feet, um, but to also go to three-hundred-and-ten square feet, so they can enlarge it even further. Um, this would be a site-specific zoning, um, which at this point in time, council, um, staff are not supportive of.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, are there any questions from the committee to staff? Council Kirby?
I'm just, um, not sure why, why, um, I'm, just, the, the recommendation is, um, that it's supported by, the application appears to be supported by the neighbors, and, and, uh, it's, it doesn't seem like a huge imposition, I, I'm just wondering what, why the recommendation against supporting the zoning amendment? Just hang on, my iPad has been acting up all evening and will not download anything, so, I've been spinny, spinny for some time, there we go. I understand now, thank you.
Council Kirby, while you're reviewing that, maybe I'll ask Council Zelka to ask his question, is that okay with you?
Certainly.
Okay.
No, I've, I've had a chance to read the addendum, and I do have some, um, concerns with, uh, with what's being asked for here, at the appropriate time, I'll be, um, moving option number two, thank you, to deny.
A bit more time, Council Kirby, because I can just go ask, I don't know if there's anybody else to ask questions, are you ready, or?
Yeah, certainly, I, um, so, I guess my, my earlier, uh, comments about the neighbors not, are being supportive are, are, uh, wrong, I didn't see this, uh, letter till just now, um, um, I guess I don't have any further questions for staff.
Thank you, uh, anybody else have any, Council Braithwaite?
Um, so this is one letter, um, but we also have attached to this, um, some information from other, um, residents around there that are very supportive of this, so perhaps, um, perhaps that should be something that's taken into account as well, is that there's, the majority of, of the neighbors seem to be, uh, onside with this, is that not so, staff? Yes?
That is correct, that the, uh, the applicant has included, uh, a series of signatures coming from, from other neighborhood residents indicating support, uh, just to clarify again that this application is a result of bylaw enforcement, which, which would have been through a complaint.
And if I may, that, that complaint was possibly through the people who wrote the letter, um, against?
Uh, Madam Chair, we don't reveal the name of any complainants.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Uh, Council Croft?
Um, I, I just noted that the date of this, this, this petition was dated August twenty-sixteen, is this matter been outstanding that long before staff, or is this just a, a new, is this the original application for the original house, or is this a new information?
Staff?
That was part of the original application.
So can I clarify that, so it wasn't in response to the enforcement?
This wasn't in response to the enforcement, the application.
No, the, the petition, that the signatures were not provided in support of the, this change, they were provided in support of the original change.
The, this was originally brought to our attention as a result of, of a complaint that led to bylaw enforcement action, the applicants have since made an application for the rezoning, and those signatures have been provided as a result of that application.
But how could that be in August sixteen?
Uh, because we were playing catch-up on many applications.
Okay, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Council Zelka?
Uh, thank you, I just want to confirm, um, for our floor area ratio, we have a hard limit of point four, and I understand why this being, why this has been brought forward for a zoning amendment, because they're specifically asking for a point four-three-two coverage, is that the, is that the essence of why this is a zoning amendment application?
That's correct, both their, both their floor area and their lot coverage would exceed any, um, amounts we have in any of our single-family zones.
Count, that, Ms. Yeah, okay, so, if there's no further questions from the committee to staff, I'm gonna turn to the, and if you could introduce yourself, and, um, we'll ask the committee if they have any questions to you.
Okay, so good evening, I'm Russ Collins from Zebra Design, and I'm representing a rezoning application on behalf of Ron and Carol Dunlop, both who are here with me tonight. We're here tonight to ask council for a rezoning in order to accommodate a larger-than-allowable deck. Why are we requesting rezoning rather than a variance, you may ask? It's because the deck, in this case, relates to site coverage and floor area, both of which are considered density and cannot be varied. So the property is located on an extremely sloped hillside on the side of King George Terrace below Gonzales Lookout, it's overlooking Crescent Road, Harling Point, Gonzales Bay, it's a beautiful location, but the steeply sloping grade creates exceptional challenges for this particular site. The steep slope makes the average grade of the lot quite low in relation to the house profile from the street, this results in the main floor of the house being slightly higher above average grade and requiring more of the basement to be calculated as floor area, in fact, eighty percent of the basement is counted in the floor area ratio on this home alone, so there is a sliding scale in the bylaw that allows the basement to be fully discounted from the FAR calculation if the main floor is four feet or less above average grade, and to be fully counted if the main floor is five feet above average grade, and this is twelve inches, so we're talking, like, you know, this much, it goes from zero to a hundred percent counted or not counted. In this particular lot, we are four foot nine-and-a-half inches, so, we're about that far out of the ground, too far. If we were, if average grade were to be adjusted by that nine-and-a-half inches, we wouldn't have an, an FAR problem, um, in fact, if we even adjusted the FAR by three-and-a-half inches, we will, would also not need an FAR change, because half of the basement would then be discounted instead of twenty percent. So, we would like to note that there is no other municipality in the CRD that we are aware of, that counts open decks and covered patios as floor area. We'd also like to point out that this is, that this situation, we are required to count the deck as floor area twice, because once on the main living level, and again on the lower level, where it's considered a covered patio, so not only recounting the deck on the top floor... So not only are we counting the deck on the top floor, we're counting it again below. If this house were on a flat lot, the lower level of the home would be defined as a basement and not count towards the FAR. The current crawl space areas could be fully expanded to be full-height usable space as well. So that technically, if it was on a flat lot, the basement could be a full basement. If this house were to be classified as a single-story in that manner, we would have a higher, excuse me, site coverage allowance of 35% instead of 30%. So the home would meet both the FAR and the site coverage without requirement for rezoning, nor any kind of variance. And that, because the house is on a hillside, it is technically considered a two-story house. But we feel that from the street, it is really a single-story house. If you look at our calculations for the height, we're way under all the height calculations for this house, too. Yeah, so there is little or no usable recreation or yard area beyond the back of the house, which drops off immediately past the back patio on the lower level. As a result, there's a very natural desire to have a usable deck space at the kitchen, off the kitchen on the main level of the house. The retired homeowners have renovated this house extensively in the past two years in order to be able to age in place. With all the living necessities on the main level, the downstairs living area is intended only for visiting family. The renovation has turned out very well and will accommodate our client's recent lifestyle changes. However, Mr. and Mrs. Dunlop would like to be able to spend their leisure time out on their deck and eat outdoors on the same level as the kitchen without carrying trays and other objects up and down the stairs to the lower patio. This home has been beautified dramatically, rather than being torn down, which we know is something that we hear about constantly in Oak Bay about houses that are getting removed. And now has another 50 to 100-year lifespan in it. The home enjoys spectacular views and deserves to have a decent deck that can accommodate more than just two deck chairs. The allowable deck shown in the building permit submission was nine feet by 10 feet, not even enough space to comfortably have a barbecue in a small seating area with a table. The existing deck, when they purchased the house, was already not in compliance with the current bylaws. So I just wanted to pass out a piece of paper here to show you something. So this piece of paper here demonstrates how the existing house functioned. The deck used to go all the way across here and over here, and there were, this end of the house was actually bayed, but we squared it off. And there was a staircase that also counted as site coverage coming down the side of the building. We also removed a bay window at the front here and removed one here and another box bay here. So we actually brought the site coverage of the house down quite, not dramatically, but a bit. But all we were left with was a nine-by-10-foot deck that we were allowed to put here because the house was already over. So going back to wherever I was, sorry. So when the existing deck, when they purchased the house, has already not in compliance with the current bylaws, and Zebra Design was not involved with the construction of this project, and so we were not aware of the changes to the deck made during construction. I mean, it was, you know, months after we had spoken and been together and worked on this project that this all happened. So many months had gone by, the house had been, was almost finished, and then they decided to try to make the deck a bit larger. When it was determined by Oak Bay staff that the deck was over the allowable maximum, work was stopped and the homeowners called us to assist with what to do. After consultation with Deborah at Oak Bay, it was discovered that the only way to achieve a larger deck in this situation would be by rezoning. And we truly believe that it is not likely to be a situation that comes up frequently for the municipality. These are extenuating circumstances driven by the slope of the lot and the unique circumstances affecting this house. The application is very good support from the neighbors, who were canvassed at the outset of our inquiry about how to address the situation and throughout the application process. This is accepting one couple who also note, this was a letter that we all received today, but they also note that they are not opposed to the larger deck in the principle, in principle, but have privacy concerns, which the Dunlops do intend to address with privacy screening on the deck. And I've also, since we got here tonight, because they hadn't even seen that letter, spoken with them. And in the photographs that you've received from that neighbor, you'll see that the, you can see the deck as I showed it to you. You can see it had the staircase coming down. So the new deck that they were proposing was intending to come over here because at one point, they actually thought of putting a staircase back down here because they wanted to allow their dog to get access to a little dog run down here, but it just was so tight, they decided to forget the stairs. But they'd be willing to cut that portion of the deck back to where it was existing and be in line with here in order to just have the deck as we proposed it, other than that. So we hope that the photos that we've brought, both before and after of the renovation, which I'll pass out in this moment, help to demonstrate the major improvements that the property owners have made and how a nine-by-10-foot deck would be really out of proportion in this context. So thank you for considering our proposal, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Okay, so any questions to the committee? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Ms. Collins. Clarify a number of points. You made a point to say that it wasn't your construction company. You drew the plans, I take it, showing a 95-square foot.
That's correct.
Construction companies, I assume, build from those plans. Correct?
Yep, usually, yep. Not always.
So what construction company would go ahead and proceed to build on plans that aren't approved? How did that occur?
Well, things like this can happen.
How did, not things like this can happen, but how did this happen?
I'm not exactly 100% sure what happened. I just, I just felt that with the time that lapsed between the time that we spoke, did our plans and sent them out the door, it was close to a year.
But someone would have had to have designed it, redesigned it, right? And put in the footings. Did you do that?
Nope. They actually had an engineer look at it and help them with the design.
It's just puzzling how it gets to where you're not involved in the construction, someone else is, and that construction company ends up building something that's not in the plans. Was there no discussion with you, or?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Well, that's why they came to me after because they said, you know, we're at the situation where we've done this without a permit or without, you know, without making the changes on the plans. What do we do? And that's why I just got involved to help them through this process.
I'm just trying to understand, too, why the developer, the builder, we'll call him or her, builder, wouldn't have said, "Well, before you can build, I can build this from 95." It was 95-approved, 310-built, three times is what was allowed. Would not the builder have said, "Before I can do this, we need approved plans?" What kind of builder would go ahead and proceed without approved plans? That's that little disconnect that I'm having trouble following.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder, because I can see, and Mr. Collins can't see this, I can see the homeowners are putting their hand up. I'm reading that nonverbal as you'd like to come and speak to this question the mayor is asking.
And I think maybe Mr. Thompson can shed some light on it, too.
So in the meantime, I'll ask the homeowners to come up and write your name up here, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Thompson to speak to this, if that's okay. And then we'll allow the applicant to speak to this. Okay? Thank you.
My understanding, I did speak to the contractor that did the renovation of the home under permit. And at the end of the project, the owner wanted the larger deck, and the contractor said, "No. You don't have approval for that. I can't build it." So the owner, I believe, found a new contractor that would.
Okay, thank you. Thompson, so could you introduce yourself? And, sorry, have you written your name down? Yep, okay. And then you could introduce us on the mic, please. Introduce yourself, not us. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, my name's Ron Dunlop, and I'm the homeowner. Part of it was bad information from our, I don't want to cast stones at anybody. First, Russ was definitely not part of the deck. The information that we were kind of given is, well, you know, we can enlarge it after the fact. It's a deck. It's not a big deal. Make sure that it's engineered and it's structurally sound, which it was done. And at that point, I didn't think it was a big deal, and I apologize to all of you that I'm not a construction person. And we were basically, at that point, putting the deck back that we took off. And it was engineered, so it wasn't a safety factor. Although I have to say, the fact that we have been since last August has been quite an unsafe factor for us because we were shut down, and there's one two-by-four. And it's made me very nervous with our four-year-old grandson many times. But, you know, our hands were kind of tied, and so we've lived with it. And we come here with our hat in hand, hoping that we can get some resolution, but there was nothing intent of being malicious or trying to circumnavigate the covenants that were put on that lot. We just kind of wanted to get back what we'd bought. And I can't say too much more to it. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And could you comment on what Mr. Thompson just told us, though? And that was your, well, I take it to be your first builder said he couldn't do this. He wouldn't do this because he had, there wasn't approval.
That is not completely right.
So just correct it then and tell us what did happen.
He, because we knew, we know nobody here, and he hired another contractor from one of the other communities.
But why didn't he do it? Is it because it wasn't approved?
He never, he never talked to me about that, to be honest. And I just never gave it a thought that it was, that we would be here tonight. It was a deck. Alls I wanted to make sure that it was safe. And he said, "Well, it's engineered and..."
Mr. Mayor, okay. I think it was Counselor Kirby, then Counselor Zelka?
I'm ready to move that we approve the zoning amendment.
I'll second that so we can have a discussion about it. A seconder? Okay. So let me just clarify, because I do want to go to the public as well. Counselor Kirby has not a follow-up on this or is a discussion?
I'm ready to motivate, as you may be.
Okay, you'd like to motivate to your motion? Okay, let's... You know what? I think we should go to the public first. Okay, so let's just go there. I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the public who'd, not many left there, but I still will ask. Okay, so nobody's coming forward. Okay, so to you, Counselor Kirby.
I think that it's an attractive renovation. It's a couple hundred square feet of deck that will allow this couple to remain and age in place. I do like the idea of stepping the deck in so that it doesn't impact the neighbors' view as much, given that they built, you know, with that in mind. I, you know, I think that it's an unfortunate set of circumstances, and this is probably the best remedy for all parties, that, you know, it's a nice compromise, that, you know, if you were to step it in, the neighbors would have their view amended and/or improved. You would have access to your view, and, you know, by going through this process, which, you know, I understand has been long and probably fairly onerous. I think, you know, that satisfies the district and health and safety is not impacted by any of this. And 200 square feet of deck, fresh air, and, you know, it's a beautiful view. Why, I don't see how it impacts anybody negatively. So I think this is a positive resolution for all sides.
Thank you, Chair. Well, we can't say it doesn't impact anybody because we have at least one letter here from someone where it does impact them, affects the people directly next door. I was hoping to move not only the staff recommendations, which is to deny, but also the Advisory Planning Commission. We have a commission of volunteer citizens who have reviewed this extensively. And as mentioned in the report, their recommendation to us as representatives of the community is to deny this rezoning application. Some of their recommendations have to do with the fact that it's three times larger than what was approved through the building permit, even acknowledging that it's a difficult and steep slope. And from looking at the house, the house is actually almost twice the size of the houses on either side from very simple, looking at it from the very top. I think the Advisory Planning Commission also indicate that this may potentially set a precedent or at least encourage others in the community to go above and beyond whatever the building permit suggests. Not necessarily that that's irrelevant, but that is in the report. I do note that directly to the north of this building is a lot that's identified as number 165. I don't know if that's a driveway or if that's a right-of-way, but I was hoping staff could explain a little bit about what this 165 strip is right beside number 167, because it does appear to give that house quite a fair bit of breathing room, coincidentally.
That's actually part of the property on Crescent. It is a separate parcel. However, I'm not sure when that happened, but they, for access to their home on Crescent, they, I guess, acquired that piece of property a long time ago so that they actually have a garage that comes off that onto their property.
Thank you. So that strip, number 165, is essentially, I guess, a driveway to the back of the property down the hill.
That's correct.
Which potentially, or basically, effectively, gives a lot of airspace and a lot of room and elbow room to number 167, I note on the map. I was hoping to move, as indicated earlier, on the recommendations of staff and of the Advisory Planning Commission. So as a result, I will not be moving, I will not be supporting the motion as indicated.
Counselor Croft?
I'm wondering if someone might just review why we're doing a zoning application and not a variance? Again, I kind of missed what that was about there for some reason. Thank you.
So legislation does not allow municipalities to vary density. So this is a form of density when it comes to lot coverage and floor area ratio. Even though our bylaws may include decks in the floor area ratio, that's how it's been for, since 1986 or longer. And that if we start changing the fact that we don't include decks, then all the current houses that are being built today, which are being built at .3999 floor area ratio and 25% lot coverage or 30% lot coverage, and then we'll have other applications that want to add decks to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. So I'm really torn with this. I don't abide by people not following the rules. And I understand where you're coming from, that you're saying that you weren't perhaps sure of exactly what the rules were. But there's a couple of things, I think, in your favor. Number one is, Counselor Zelka mentioned the size of the house. Well, you did not build that house. You bought that house in the state that it is, so you didn't actually cover that amount of the lot with the house. You just did internal renovations, correct, and some external taking windows out to make it a little bit smaller from the outside. So that we can't hold against you, I don't think. We also can't hold against you the fact that the lot is on a slope because I think as Mr. Collins has mentioned, that if the, if there was a three-and-a-half-inch or a nine-inch difference, then 80% of the basement wouldn't be included in the floor area ratio. So I think you have that going for you as well because that is a difficult lot to work with. The spot zoning thing is a bit of an issue because I would agree that we don't want to be in a situation where we are spot zoning. to be, um, in a situation where we are spot zoning many different, um, uh, pieces of land throughout the municipality. However, in this particular case, I think that a spot zoning for this house to allow someone to, um, to put on a little bit of a deck, um, and, but I would agree that it should be changed to take that one little side off, um, so that the house would not be ripped down and rebuilt, um, to allow for, for more decking. I, I, I could support that. So I will support the motion as it stands and, um, but I, I think that we really do need to somehow make it clear to people, I'm not sure how, but that you do have to have permits to do certain things. And, you know, I get tired of people coming and asking for forgiveness rather than permission. Um, am I going to hold it against you in this particular case? No, because I think that the lot dictates, um, something different in this particular case, but, um, there are other instances where I, I get very upset about people coming and asking for forgiveness. So today I'm going to say that I will support, um, the motion as it stands.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Just had a question, because I was thinking about what Mr. Dunlop, is it, and, uh, and what was said. Uh, and I don't know if this is best answered by Mr. Collins, Mr. Thomason. Mr., what I maybe misunderstood, or what I understood from, uh, Mr. Dunlop was he just wanted to build what he had before the renovation. Was there a 300-square-foot deck before the renovation? That's what I don't understand. And-
That's the existing deck that was there before.
And, and how big was that?
Close to the size that we're proposing, a little bit smaller, but almost the same size. I did it-
So the, the hatching here, the hatching here represents the exist, the deck prior to-
That, that deck, that set of stairs existed.
I see. And, and you don't know how big that deck was compared to what's being proposed now?
Well, I have a, um-
And why didn't, and then, as you're looking for it, why didn't you design that back into that size?
Because when we were designing, sorry, when we were, um, going through our program to figure out, you got to remember, this was, house was built back in, I think, um, 97? Yeah. So zoning bylaws change all the time and, um, we're not sure what they were under. I would have thought that they'd have been under a point four floor area ratio, maybe, um, there's a chance that, uh, the basement didn't count at the time because of the way that they interpreted the grade or, or said the grade was what it was, I'm not sure. When we figured it out, we determined that the deck was too big and that, and that's after, as you see in that drawing that I've given you, looking at this bay window also being removed, which is an existing floor space, this bay window being removed, this box bay over here being removed, we filled in a small space here and we filled, this was a bay, but we squared that off and that was the existing deck that was there before. And we're not sure, but we assumed that was all done under a building permit and so we're not, um, and I also, um, just wanted to say one more thing, just if this helped at all, is that a point four, three, two floor area ratio for the size of this lot works out to 3,301 square feet, which is 244.6 square feet over the allowable. But if you actually break it down, the main floor of this house is considered to be 2,140 square feet, 388.5 of that square feet is garage. So the actual square footage of the house is only 1,751 square feet. There's a thousand-foot square footage in the basement. And again, I was trying to point out that if this was a, if we had a slightly different change in grade, that thousand square feet would not count as floor area ratio. It would be, in fact, it could be 1,750 more square feet of basement. Okay? So it could be quite a bit larger if we just had a slightly different change in the elevation. So when we're talking about a 310-square-foot deck that we're adding a couple hundred square feet to, to make it usable and livable, in the scheme of things, it seems like a very minor, um, request, to make this an enjoyable, livable house for this, these people.
Yeah, I think you, yeah, you, you mentioned that earlier and I caught that. Um, the, I guess the concern that I have is, this is from the letter from, and what I take it to be Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, who are immediate next door, where they say the new deck is bigger, extends further, is closer to the property line, looks straight into our bedroom and our main living room, that is an open plan. Now, we now have absolutely no privacy and she sends us pictures, or they send us pictures. And then goes on to say, Mr. and Mrs. Dunlop claim the deck is as it was before, which you can see from the pictures below is not the case. Would you agree with her? It's not as it is before, yes?
It's, it's very close.
It's close, but it-
That's why I sent you that picture right there to look at. It's just that it's, it's about three and a half feet closer to their property, which they've agreed to remove.
And return it so that she has a privacy.
So it's back to what it was before.
Just as a, just as a point of interest, uh, if we had not renovated that house, that house set up, that, where that looks into their house was a kitchen before and there was windows that would look straight, that we'd be looking into their house all day long. But when we renovated, we, we took the windows out so that we would not be looking into their house.
Okay, so I just have, oh, thank you, that's, that's a fair point. I have a question for staff then that comes up from this. If, if this goes ahead, then, as, as it sits, then technically, Mr. Dunlop does not have to remove those three feet. He can build and, and leave it the way it is, correct? Because the current motion contemplates what he built, not what he's offering to remove. Do you follow?
So to clarify, um, the photos that you've seen with the correspondence are showing a deck constructed as it is now. The proposal, um, from the applicant as presented is not only for the deck that you see now, but also expanding it by another 50 square feet. So if council approves the motion as it is, you're actually allowing, with, with the draft bylaw set up the way it is, it actually allows the deck as is in addition to another 50 square feet.
But he, we've just heard him say he will take off three feet and make sure the privacy is existing, but technically he doesn't have to do that under the current proposed bylaw.
That's correct. If council wishes to see something else to support a rezoning application, we would have to get amended plans and amend the, the draft zoning bylaw.
Because I can see some equity in what Mr. Dunlop says, although I, I still am concerned how the two builders, you know, one didn't want to do it and the other said, okay. That, that caused me concern, but not necessarily reflective on, on Mr. Dunlop. I think that if, we should perhaps let him have what he had before, not, not extend another 50 feet, not extend those three feet, but just, uh, allow him to have essentially this, uh, as what he had before, the equivalent of this, because the woman next door, which obviously she had a significant, she had privacy, or at least she felt had more privacy at that point. So how can, how can we allow someone to, 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 to build the way it is invoke, impose on the privacy? I, that, that's the problem I have. I, I can understand the equity of allowing him something back from what he had, but not now he wants more by the sounds of it. And I don't think that's fair to the neighbor, that's all. So that's why I, I, I can't support it the way it is and I would prefer it go back to a redraw, uh, which can perhaps, the, the neighbors can be involved in understanding what it's going to look like. Uh, and I think that would be fair to her, because I think we need to be fair, well, fair to the Roberts, I don't say it's her, because I think it came from her email, but, um, so that, that strikes me as a fair way to do it. Sort of balance the interests of the neighbor with Mr. Dunlop without imposing an overly big burden on Mr. Dunlop, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Jensen, did you have something to comment in response to what Mr. Mayor said?
I, I just wanted to clarify that, um, histor- historically for this site, um, I currently can't confirm that that, that rear deck was actually constructed legally, whether there was actually a building permit ever attached to that. The second piece of that is that, um, it actually was within the rear yard setback, so even, um, they would have had non-conforming status on that, even if it was approved. So by going back there, we would actually still need a variance for the entire deck for the rear lot.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Jensen. I, I'm just, I, I, just to make sure we've got all the information, because I, I saw, uh, Mr. Collins want to speak when the mayor was talking. I wonder if you could just speak, and then we'll go to Mr. or Counselor Zelka.
So I was just wanting to point out that the, um, the neighbors, the, the neighbors are also my clients, too. I designed their renovation also. Um, and they, when they're talking about the existing deck being where it was and what they're seeing is exactly what I showed you in that drawing where I etched it in, in red, that's the portion that they'd like to see removed. And they also said in their letter that they're not against them asking for a larger deck as long as it's out, like around, not where it's affecting their privacy. And so where we've asked for that extra 50 square feet is out in front of the dining room, where it's not affecting their privacy.
So this came from you?
Yeah.
But this, is this a- This came from you, Mr. Collins, yes. But this is not reflected in the current proposed bylaw.
Right. Because we didn't get this letter till today and my, my clients didn't even see it till tonight.
And I, I quite frankly can't see us proceeding because on what we have, because it doesn't reflect what's going to be built. And it takes a chance then that some subsequent, uh, owner would build out.
Okay.
I don't know the best way forward, is to just defer this or, or have a, a new plan to be brought back and have that bylaw based on that new plan.
Okay. So we've got a, a motion on the table. I'm going to let Counselor Zelka speak to this.
Well, thank you very much, Chair. Um, I, I, I certainly could support moving back to something that was maybe legal non-conforming or something that was existing in terms of a size. Um, and I do see the dilemma we're sort of in where what's possibly, as a possible solution has nothing to do with what's actually out there in terms of the, uh, proposed zoning change. Uh, so maybe if I could possibly direct through Chair to, to staff, would, uh, uh, not necessarily denial, but, um, referring this or, or deferring this to give a chance for the plans to possibly be revised? Would that be an appropriate course of action? Yes?
Uh, Madam Chair, ultimately it would be a question of the will of the committee, what they're looking to achieve. At this time, the motion on the floor is with respect to the bylaw and plans attached to the committee of the whole agenda. So if it was the wish of the committee to see a different set of plans proceed through a bylaw, that would need to be provided to staff for staff analysis to come forward at a future time.
But we can't deny, because then that would cause a delay, like a certain statutory period of time where we think, but they, so how could we delicately handle this where it doesn't cause undue delay to the applicant?
Uh, uh, Madam Chair, uh, not meaning to, um, just wanted to provide kind of the menu of options before the committee. Uh, denial is certainly an option, but as you've noted, that would require then the statutory time period before they could reapply with, unless there were substantially different plans. So it, should council so choose, uh, apologies, should the committee so choose, they could provide some level of context to the applicant and to staff as to what they would be looking for, should they wish to have a deferral to a future meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Okay, I apologize, Counselor Murdock. Uh, did you finish, Counselor Zelka?
Just would love some help crafting, uh, some sort of instructions to staff.
Okay, so, but just put pause, because I, I have been ignoring you, Counselor Murdock. I do apologize, um, okay?
No worries, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I'm just going to, I have to sort of say this out loud, just to make sure I've got this all, I mean, this is one of these ones that is sort of the wisdom of Solomon type things where there's, it's hard not to be very sympathetic to this application. Uh, it's a fairly minor addition in the bigger scheme of things. Um, appreciate the desire to age in single level, to age in place. Um, it doesn't appear to be hurting anyone to be, to be putting it there and a significant portion of it existed prior to this renovation, so how much do you weigh in existing pieces? Um, on the flip side of that, I have, uh, you know, the rules are very clear and they are, uh, all houses are expected to abide by those rules. We can't vary this even if we wanted to, because it's, it's a, it's a lot coverage issue. So if someone, uh, were to tear this house down and build a new house, you would actually be forced to build a smaller house because of the lot coverage and, and the, and the grade and everything else. It exists the same problem. It's not, the real issue here is that the house was built to the absolute maximum size allowed and now it's, uh, what is supposed to be a very reasonable allowance is no longer possible. Um, perhaps the message here is, don't build to the absolute maximum size allowed. Uh, this was done 20 years ago, not by you, um, but it seems to be an uncommon problem and I, if I have a concern here, uh, it is just that, that we have houses being built to the absolute max size and to consider this as a, a rezoning process every time someone says we want to make a very reasonable addition to it, um, I, I just see that being a, a, an issue, certainly from a, a management perspective for staff and for council over the long term. Um, I do weigh into this, the, uh, the difficulty of the lot. Um, the steeply sloping makes some of these calculations difficult because their average grade and the steeply sloping makes that always a bit iffy. And as you pointed out quite rightly, the, the difference of grade could make quite a difference. Um, again, though, no one, at the time of the house is built, it wasn't built in the 1930s, it was built in the late 1990s, when the rules were substantial, this, substantially the same. Um, I don't, I don't really actually weigh in that much if it was, if it was a flat lot or if it was truly a single level, because really at the end of the day, it's not. It's not a flat lot, it's not a single level, uh, the rules are, are reasonably there. I've listened with great interest to the conversation that's gone around the table, because I, on the balance of things, I was not terribly comfortable with, with considering a rezoning on this property. I, I think it sets a dangerous precedent. I don't think we want to be going through a rezoning process for single-family homes that are, that are built to the max and wanting to relax those rules for, for lot coverage and, 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 and house size. Um, but I, I do hear, uh, the lot, you know, the, the positive renovation and the, um, this, this impossible accommodation here of reverting the, the, the deck back to its original size. I, I'd probably feel comfortable with that. Um, not ecstatic, but probably comfortable with that. I'm not, is that, I'm trying to summarize in my head the pros and cons and the, the things in favor and against. Is there anything I'm missing here from the applicant? Is, is, if I just effectively sort of summarized from your, uh, am I missing anything in terms of my considerations here? You don't have to answer that if you don't.
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, based on the conversation here, I, I'd be not comfortable with the motion as it stands, but I would, uh, I think be quite comfortable with this was brought, again, brought in, so it was away from the neighbor's house and brought back to the original, uh, overhang that was there prior to the renovations, um, I would feel comfortable with going through, I think I would feel comfortable going through with this process, um, uh, under that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murdock. So Counselor Zelka, Counselor Kirby.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, a quick question for staff, first of all. From building height, roof height, occupiable height, it appears that there is room for, um, uh, building up on this particular property. Uh, 6.52 meters on roof height, uh, where the, uh, so what's allowed is point eight eight four, eight point eight four? Yeah, in terms of floor, well, floor area might be an issue, that's true. If they go up in terms of, trying to put some sort of a widow walk up there, that's true. Uh, and, and, yeah, because they're over, over height on FAR and on, 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 on coverage, that is an issue. So, um, I'd like to table, uh, move a motion to table.
Well, we've got a motion, so that we need to deal with the motion on, no, if you table, you're fine. Okay, okay, I got you. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So move to table if I may.
Okay.
Um, to, um, uh, so that the, uh, plans can return, uh, reflecting, um, the, I guess, what would we call this, the legal non-conforming existing size? I'm not quite sure what to describe this, but essentially the, the size of the deck as it existed, uh, beforehand.
Okay, we got a s-
Point of order.
Okay, uh, okay. Seconder, uh, okay.
Point of order. Um, I, I just want to clarify that, um, when I made the motion to approve the zoning change or to approve the application, um, my understanding was that we were agreeing to what the applicant had said, where they were willing to move the, the side of the, the deck in. And so that was part of my, my understanding of the app- the application, that, that their assurances were included in the zoning application.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Kirby. I, you've made your, what you intended clear, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Jones to speak to what you've just said, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could draw council's attention to Report Attachment Three, which is the draft zoning amendment bylaw, if you scan to page three on that, you will see the plans that are currently incorporated are embedded within the draft bylaw, which is what would be before council on April twenty fourth. Should council have any, or the, apologies again, the committee have any desire or wish to see that bylaw amended, we, it, it would not be staff's recommendation to be giving first and second reading to it on April twenty fourth.
Uh, yes, if I may?
Sure, Councillor Kirby didn't have a response to that. Are you, you okay? Okay, you're just reading.
So, so, just for my clarification, then, if, uh, so it, it would be best for now, for the zoning, uh, sorry, for the first and second reading to not be approved at that time. So we would wait till we get to that point to, to fix it?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Always love to discuss bylaws. So, uh, part of the purpose overall, the reason we incorporate the draft bylaw before the committee there is to see the bylaw that would be before you when you were next giving first and second reading. So at this time, it being a short week, although long weekends are lovely, uh, at this point, the bylaw that we have here is what it would be staff's understanding would be having first and second reading on April twenty fourth. That is the timeframe that we would have in order to turn around for that time. Should it be the desire of the committee that you wish to see different plans, for example, incorporated into the bylaw, potentially that could be a, a recommendation that could be put forward by the committee. Regardless, those staff would still need an opportunity to review them, to make sure there wasn't subsequent changes to the bylaw that would be required. I hope that's of assistance, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Okay, so I'm going to Councillor Zelka, I think it was Councillor Brayfith, and Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. So speaking to the table.
There's no ta- discussion on the table.
But I do have a, a, just a, a point of order on the, the other point of order. I think, I, I think the, the purpose of the deferral motion
Yeah.
is to come back with a new set of plans embedded in the bylaw.
Okay. So, Ms. Jones, do you want, okay, you're good?
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, on, on the point of order, on the point of order, I think. So just to clarify, it would be perhaps a, a deferral motion to see subsequent plans come forward to be embedded in a bylaw. Would that maybe be, if, if I could through you, Chair, to the mover, just to confirm that that was the nature?
If you're referring to a picture that looks like this, with that part taken off, and this part taken off, yes.
So then the motion before council would be to defer it to a future meeting by which those plans would be incorporated in then before the committee?
With the net effect taking it back to the illegal non-conforming state that it was beforehand.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute, there's, there's a lot of information coming here, all, okay.
Sorry, just, just to confirm, the motion is talking about amended plans, but I just want to draw to your attention that depending on what that final plan looks like, could also amend the lot coverage and floor area ratio other than what's being, um, proposed now. So we would have to incorporate that as well.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay, um, Councillor Kirby.
I, uh, I just, um, so I'm, what I'm understanding is that is no longer a tabling motion? So, so that is no, so we can debate? So are they, is the tabling motion, are we gonna vote on it, or we, or is the mover of the tabling motion going to take that back?
Okay, I think that we're gonna try one last one round on the point of order. I think just we've had a good clarification in regards to vocabulary. Traditionally, on tabling motions, there is no debate. However, it was helpfully clarified that this is a deferral motion, for there to be subsequent information coming forward, that's a perfectly fine motion, should it be the will of the committee to have further discussion on it.
Defer, for me, is fine.
So we got a seconder? Okay, okay.
So we have a deferral motion without having voted on the first motion?
Okay.
A, a motion to defer can be considered in advance of the actual motion itself?
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion to defer on the table. So, Councillor Murdoch?
Uh, just, I think it's important to have the most clarity possible for staff and, and the applicants, uh, to put this together, so there's no more, uh, concerns raised. I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement here on what's being proposed, which is to return the, uh, the outside, um, barrier to, to the distance out from the building as it was originally, uh, prior to the renovation. Uh, so that was whatever, ten feet or nine feet, whatever that was. Uh, and the width of it is to the proposed line there, where it gets stepped in, um, those few feet back from the sideline, your, your lot. Is that, is that, is that the general agreement here with the group? Because I would hate for them to go through a bunch of work and get, and staff to go through a bunch of work to do something, and then it comes back here, and there isn't, uh, we all have different understandings of that. So I just want to make sure that, that's clear, because that's my understanding.
Thanks, Councillor Murdoch. Councillor Kirby has a comment?
I, my understanding was not that. I was, I was, uh, under the, under the assumption that we were going to allow the, the deck as proposed, but without the bit that sticks out, so that it wouldn't impact the neighbor's view. That's the only thing I'm concerned about. I don't mind that it goes out further, that it's, uh, than the original deck. I don't think that impacts anybody, if it, it sticks out a little bit further, um, the extra fifty feet. I don't think that's a, that's a, you know, that's not going to hurt anybody if it's sticking out further. What, what I think is the problem is where it impacts the neighbors to the side, um, where it's, where it's a, an extension. So I, my understanding of, of the, what I, what I'm comfortable with is the design as proposed, without that three-foot extension out to, um, the left, or whatever, the, the side, the east side. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we did need some clarity, because we've got discrepancies. Councillor Zelka?
Uh, so that is not what I moved. What I moved was, uh, to return to the deck as it existed before, which was twenty-four feet, three and a quarter inches by ten foot, eleven and one quarter inches. That's what existed there beforehand, according to the drawings. Thank you.
Well, I would agree with Councillor Kirby. I'm quite happy with just taking the three feet off the side and keeping the L-shaped deck that remains.
So I guess what we're going to need is some specificity in, in, in the motion, or? Okay, so let, let's call a question on the deferral, shall we? And see where that goes? And then we can?
This is just a deferral motion then? No other attachments? So there's no, no descriptions?
The motion before the committee is to defer to a future meeting to allow the applicant to provide additional plans that would specifically address what pre-existed.
Okay. Is there any further discuss? Okay, that's the motion discussion. Councillor Brayfith and Councillor Kirby.
Okay, so I, I just need then, um, from the applicant, some clarification as to exactly what was there prior to this, because I, I, I need to have a look at this, I guess, is what I need. Because I'm very confused now as to what's there was before and what we're proposing now. So before, it was the cross, the cross lines. What you're proposing now is to go out to that other line. Is that correct? It's not on here.
There's a red, there's a one that's been marked up with red over there. I think it didn't get very, oh, okay, got stuck there. I think that should be handed around.
Sorry to, to weigh in, Madam Chair. Uh, just a, a thought maybe for the committee's consideration. Um, I appreciate there's about two or three plans that have been circulated here, that some members of the committee have seen at different times. It sort of presents to us the challenges of having this discussion without those being incorporated into the agenda. So, uh, although at this point, regardless of whether an amended plan was provided probably tomorrow, we still wouldn't traditionally be able to incorporate it into the April twenty fourth first and second reading. However, there is a ca- council meeting on May eighth. So it would be one potential option, potentially for the applicants to provide whatever additional plans or information they might choose to, and then council would have the opportunity as a group to look at the information with regards to a plan, and staff would have the opportunity to review it. That might be one option that the committee would choose to consider.
And, and grafted onto that, which I think is a very reasonable approach, consider it be the eighth, uh, I suppose if the applicant has any quandary as to which way we're going, uh, the op- applicant could presumably say option A and option B. Option A would be strictly what was there, and option B would be what was there plus the bump out, which the neighbor seems to not have a problem with, because it's around the corner from her vision. So if we have those two choices ahead of us, in front of us, and I assume it's just a matter of attaching the right drawing once council has made a decision, but there's also a percentage, there's a percentage issue.
Uh, Madam Chair, through you, I think the manager of planning can, can speak to that potential?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Ms. Jensen?
We work together a lot, we're starting to look the same.
Options does create difficulty in terms of, uh, council considering, uh, the bylaw itself. Um, we would have to determine what the specific lot coverage and floor area ratio is for each of those options. Um, I do want to just offer up a proviso, though, with, with the, the motion to look at pre-existing, we can't necessarily confirm what that pre-existing is, depending upon the information that's in the file.
I also wanted to raise the point that pre-existing was a staircase down the east side. So where that three feet of additional deck is being removed in, in the proposal, that would have been there, that three feet would have been there, and a staircase, which would have impacted the view of the, the neighbor to the east. So there was a staircase, there's, there's images of a staircase. And it will cut at an angle around the corner, meaning, but still there, it, it wasn't. So my, my concern is that we're, we're talking about, we're talking about reverting to a plan that didn't exist, that, or that doesn't exist currently with stairs, it's different. And I think, um, I understand the intent, the intent or the, the desire to move back to what was, to replace what was, but I think that that is muddying the waters, and that going with, um, the proposal, uh, that has come forward, it's respecting with, you know, without the three feet to the side and the east, it's respecting the neighbor's desire for privacy, and it's, and it's also respecting the design of the new house, and it's, uh, it's, it's not asking for something that's, uh, going to impact anybody in any grand form.
Okay, I, you know what I'm gonna do, because we're gonna have to find a way to bring this to some closure for all of us, okay? So I, I'm going to ask that, because it's got very mucky here, a little bit muddled, okay? Because, probably because we don't have the plans here. But, so, I'm gonna ask Mr. for a suggestion about how we move forward here.
That's a lot of pressure, Madam Chair. Um, so my suggestion would be that you leave this as a simple deferral. I think the applicants have heard all the views of different members of council, and there are different views of council, and, uh, working with staff, they would come forward with, uh, back to council, because there will have to be changes to the bylaws, and we can't put that in front of you, uh, right at this moment. We have to take that away and do a little bit of analysis on that. So I, my suggestion would be a simple deferral motion, and we would bring it back as soon as we possibly can, uh, working, uh, with the applicants again, um, after them hearing, because they've heard, uh, what, uh, members of council have had to say, and, uh, it, it's up to them how they, uh, would like to, uh, choose to come forward.
Okay, that's, that seems to me a reasonable, um, suggestion. Now, we have two motions on the floor, and we're gonna have to deal with those, and if council, uh, goes along with the recommendation coming from Mr. Jones, then we can move to that. So, um, I, I probably need to let you guys respond to Mr. Jones's suggestion then. Okay.
So the, the current motion is not a simple deferral, it's a conditional deferral. So, uh, what someone might want to do is just, um, amend the deferral motion to remove the condition, um, and just saying a simple deferral. I think that's the cleanest, simplest way to do it.
A comment on that?
Madam Chair, it really depends on the will of council. I mean, whoever the mover was could just withdraw the motion, but if it was the consent of the committee, uh, to move forward with a simple, what I call a simple deferral motion, we could do that. But whoever moved that motion should, uh, agree to, uh, to withdraw it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, that was you.
Uh, if the seconder would, uh, would agree, I'd be fine to, to adjust it and change it to a simple deferral.
Okay, okay. So let's deal with that then. So we've got a mo- a motion to defer, um, the, the mo- the, the, uh, the consideration, okay? It's a simple deferral, okay? Councillor Murdoch, and then Councillor Zelka.
So a lot of time spent to not make a decision. The, um, I have no issue with this. I think just as a, as a point of best practice is here, we may want to bring it back to the next committee of the whole. If May eighth is the soonest, uh, you know, council meeting, this is a nice way of actually having a discussion on these things. In council, it's very hard to have a sort of a reasoned and nuanced discussion about what's coming forward, especially since we don't know what is gonna come back as, as part of the proposal. So, uh, that probably my suggestion in terms of managing it, but I'm happy with the motion as it is.
Councillor Zelka?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm also happy with a deferral for staff to decide which, which meeting it comes back to. I would, if I, if I had a say, I would say the next committee of the whole. Uh, but I do have a question, uh, relating to, um, a, a deck in the back of a house that was built without a building permit. Um, could we insist on whatever, uh, comes forward with respect to how to legalize this? Could we insist that that deck be, uh, be, um, have an engineer's stamp associated with it? Because I, 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 I wonder out loud whether possibly the deck, uh, well, an engineered, uh, uh, deck is not necessarily a professionally engineered deck. So I just wanted to ask, uh, staff whether we can insist upon, since, uh, you know, single-family houses can be built without an engineer. However, in this case, because we're doing special, um, special considerations for a special deck that we have no idea about the status of, in terms of how it will be modified or adjusted, can we insist upon a professional engineer designation, uh, stamp approval plan for it, please?
So, um, in the end, the building permit's still gonna be required for additional deck, um, and, uh, staff would look at, uh, whatever design it is, as to whether an engineer is required or not. It depends on whether it's, uh, compliant to the code, or if it's outside the code and requires an engineer to design it.
There's no further discussion. We've got the motion on the table, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor? And against, uh, one aga- it's two against. Okay, so the motion is carried. So, then we have another, uh, motion? Two, we've got two. It's all deferred. It all goes away. So look at, now, you know what we need? A motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment second.
Okay. We have, okay, oppose? Oh, oppose, okay. Thank you very much for everybody.